Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 24, 2023, meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. Rather than go through the standard opening, I'll defer that until after we're done. First thing that is on tonight's agenda is executive session. This is for 6:00 PM. As Chair, I am making a preliminary determination of the need for executive session to discuss litigation. So I will make a motion that pursuant to general law is Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, we move into executive session for the purpose of meeting Town Council relating appeal of hearing 11716 Falmouth Hospitality LLC, 0 and 556 Main, and 034 and 6 Lantern Lane, Falmouth, and to come out of executive session and go to open session afterwards. Is there a second to the motion? Second, I'll give that from Scott. Roll call votes.
Jerry Potomac's aye.
Duffy aye.
Finer an aye.
Morse aye.
Murphy aye.
Pedersen aye.
Petrucci aye.
It will be in executive session. Just ask the two members of the audience to retire. Thank you for your patience. Good evening, everyone. As you can see, we previously opened at 6:00 for the purpose of executive session. We've concluded that. Next up on our agenda is public comment. This public comment is reserved for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make a public comment of anything that's not specifically on the agenda this evening? Next up on our agenda is continuations. We have one hearing tonight on continuations at 06120M EcoLand Development LLC, 0 Percival Road, Lot 4 T-Ticket, requesting the Board to review revised plans for a comprehensive permit pursuant to a mediation assented to by the parties during the applicant's appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant. Question?
I have to read three letters in?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I could read them in first, please?
Sorry, I saw the chairman looking at me. Sorry, I misinterpreted.
I got it. Okay, I have three new letters that were received, and we also received revised plans. The first letter is, "For the new members of the Board, my name is Jennifer Scala, and I'm the longest abutter of this Percival property of 45 years. I own one of the three family childcare's that abut this proposed project. I have addressed my safety concerns previously and most recently had had my land surveyed by Cape and Islands Engineering, and there is a 10-foot discrepancy of lot lines. I don't believe this project can proceed and probably shouldn't have gotten this far without a certified plot plan by the developer to the town. I also believe that the relationship of the developer with the abutters is one of threats and unkindness. We have been threatened on multiple occasions, trespassed upon, stared down, chased, and bullied. I have no idea what would happen if this project was to go through. After all, most of us abutters are women and children. This is not okay. The plot plans that have been submitted are way too vague, and the walkthrough video I saw with the developer was uneventful with where mailboxes, driveways, septics, drainage, sidewalks, turnaround, and hydrants will be placed. My biggest issue besides safety is the road and the drainage. The Falmouth bylaws state a dead-end road can be only 500 feet for safety reasons, and this project is asking for a 1,200-foot road, deeming it very unsafe. The developer stated in the last meeting he was giving all abutters a 20-foot natural buffer. Sounds good, right? Then a few sentences later, the developer said he was putting drainage upon that 20-foot buffer, which, as you and I know, that the town knows drainage requires clear cutting, which would obviously nullify a natural buffer. So what is it? A 20-foot natural buffer with a fence? Drainage? Sewage? Or what? We need clear, appropriate certified plans. Lastly, I listened to the traffic specialist say in his opinion, all caps, and I capitalize opinion, this project would have a safe entrance. Still wondering who owns the entrance because we don't have a certified signed plot plan. That being said, there was a terrible accident there with a flipped car, and Mr. Santos and Mr. Bauer across from the proposed entrance have had their fences and stone walls smashed several times in the past couple of years. There is skid marks all over the road there also from separate instances. The bush and the mailboxes that are clearly barriers for a clear entrance are enough to make the entrance unsafe along with the fact that any point a 6-foot stockade fence could be put up. Thank you for your time in reading my letter aloud. Have a great night, Jennifer Scala." The next one, "I am a direct abutter writing once again with opposition to this 40B development located on Percival Road. In the last meeting, Attorney Wall and Attorney Freeman disagreed that the town has the right to remove any tree/landscaping that may be contributing to the poor sightline when pulling out a trotting pack. Mr. Wall and Mr. Freeman were also in disagreement that the mailboxes could be moved to improve the sightline. Unless there is something in writing from both the Town of Falmouth, the postmaster, that this can be done legally, I believe this alone is not enough to approve this application. I understand the need for affordable housing, but I do not agree with it getting at the cost of everyone's safety. I am also unsure why the town did not move forward with the Cape Cod Commission's site distance assessment as Attorney Wall has repeatedly suggested. I hope if this application is approved, the Board is confident that this development will be a positive/safe contribution to this town. The additional traffic test was just one more measure to ensure everyone's safety, and I believe a ball was dropped here. If the Board does feel as though this project should move forward, I would ask that a 6-foot fence be installed prior to construction. Mr. Montero has made no attempt to work with the neighbors regarding landscape or in general at all, as witnessed at the site visit. Any communication from him has been hostile, and many of the neighbors have experienced this. I am requesting that the fence line, I'm requesting that the fence line, the entire road, in addition to the natural border he plans to keep. I am also requesting that it be indicated it must be a stockade fence of quality so we do not end up with an eyesore." And then the next one is kind of long. Would you please read this email into the record? "I am a direct abutter to the proposed development, and I am very concerned that the stormwater generator will not be contained on site. The remand hearing on the revised eco-development opened in May 23. The town's remand peer review consultant Beals &amp; Thomas stated that he assumed the stormwater calc submitted to the Board had been reviewed and approved by the peer review consultant on the original project, and that he therefore did not review the drainage calc. The applicant took this opportunity to state that his submittal had been approved for a 16-unit development and that he would utilize the same drainage mitigation measures more than necessary for the reduced 12-unit project. In other words, he claimed he would do more than is needed to prevent stormwater drainage off the site. This did not coincide with my recollection of what had transpired during the original hearing. I would like to provide the following for your consideration. The third and final report of the Engineering Department dated January 27, 22 detailed 25 deficiencies in the proposed stormwater and septic systems. Bullet 2, the final revision of the original peer review consultant's report, Green International Affiliates dated February 22, 22, does not definitely approve the drainage calc and proposed structures. For example, the consultant affers to the Board whether waivers should be granted to Section 305-2-F point parentheses 6 of the subdivision regulations, which state, "Natural drainage courses swales, properties stabilized with plant materials and drainage catchment areas shall be utilized to dispose of water on-site through natural percolation. To obtain maximum percolation of runoff, it is necessary in all drainage areas to retain and leave undisturbed as much existing vegetation as possible, particularly large trees and sh- and shrubs. Use of natural areas for drainage is preferred. However, if such a natural drainage area are insufficient or nonexistent, drainage areas shall be constructed only under the supervision of the Falmouth DPW. Newly constructed drainage areas shall be planted with shrubs and trees suitable for moist soil. A drainage area shall be tested for the rate of percolation." Bullet 3, I think. "The drainage plan has changed. Initially, when access was on Percival Road, there was no plan. When the road design changed, there was one detention basin at the far end of the development near the Gonzalez property. Then at a later point, the infiltration units are across from my house and the Swain House were added. It's not clear to me when the stormwater report was issued in relation to these changes in the project." Five, "The stormwater report, which was flashed on the screen by the applicant at a recent public hearing, is not posted on the ZBA website, where all the documents associated with the remand project are posted. Thus it is not clear that the stormwater report is part of the record on the remand hearing." Six, "To operate properly, all stormwater systems require active operation and maintenance. The small print on the plan of the drainage infrastructure talks about maintenance and cleaning out of the system. There's no provision for this. The developer should have submitted an O&amp;M plan, operation and maintenance plan. Further, there should be something about creating an HOA and making the HOA responsible for the O&amp;M. The applicant has not done this." Six, "The evidence of the record suggests that the stormwater infrastructure has never been reviewed by one of the peer review engineers nor the town's engineering department of the DPW. Further, the developer's drainage plans have changed at least three times, and it comes at the plans, and it appears that the plans have changed after the stormwater report was submitted without the report being updated or supplemented. Thus it is far from clear that the stormwater drainage system is going to work properly. Since I live across from one of the proposed drainage infiltration structures, I am gravely concerned that the drainage system may not work and may cause flooding. I'm particularly concerned about my tenants who occupy an accessory apartment constructed at grade without a basement on the southerly side of my residence. Thank you for your consideration, Pat Harris, 181 Percival Road." Sorry, that's what I have.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant, and Ed Montero, his, is here. Also, our engineer, Jack, is here. Question, I think there might be something from a Town Department. Do you have anything else from any folks internal to the Town?
Let me look. I just have the revised plans and those letters. I don't, do you think there's anything else in here? I can look through if you want to continue, and I'll keep looking.
All right, so thank you for that. So just a few things, because we pretty much covered most everything at the last hearing. We did agree to extend so that we could provide slightly revised plans to answer any remaining questions from your peer reviewer, Matt Cote. So on August 10th, well ahead of tonight's hearing, I submitted a letter and the plans, the revised plans that were also dated August 10th, and that was submitted by me on behalf of the applicant. And then I also submitted what you received directly from your peer review expert, Matt Cote, which was an email from Matt to our engineer on August 9th, and I'm not going to read it all, but it basically went through what Matt referred to as the remaining items from his original review letters, which we had discussed previously, and sent at least two different responses to Mr. Cote and to you folks, and filed them. That showed the responses that we had. And at the last hearing, there were just a few things outstanding according to Mr. Cote. So his letter on, or email rather, on August 9th went through them and basically indicated satisfaction with what had been done and prepared by our engineer and as reflected on the plans that were submitted. The only thing I would point out is at the end of that email, Mr. Cote mentioned a few, really just calculations. He asked for calculations of the comparative total area, impervious area, open space, things like that. And although it wasn't sent in separately, the plans that were submitted, submitted on page two, definitely had, I just made a small copy, or a copy on a eight-by-eleven paper, but at the top right of, I believe it's page two, it has those total calculations to show the coverage areas, so-called. So those are submissions that we made. Another submission, and I believe that this was via email, so it's something which the Board should have. Ashley DeMello sent it to me by email on August 22nd, and it's from the Fire Chief, Craig O'Malley, Lieutenant Craig O'Malley, from the Fire Department, saying that the hydrant locations were acceptable, so that should be part of your record. Again, it was sent to me by your secretary. So I think that any questions with the Fire Department, that's responsive. I also have one letter that I'm not sure if it was sent in. It's from a neighbor with one of the mailboxes at the intersection of Trotting Park and Percival, John Santos, which basically said that he understands this project is looking for the 40B permit. And as to the mailbox, if it's necessary to move it, he gives EcoLand Development his permission to move the mailbox so that it wouldn't be in the line of sight. So I don't know if it was submitted.
I did find the letter from the Fire Department. Says hydrant locations for the plan are acceptable. There is a notation for fire call box if required. The Fire Department no longer requires fire alarm boxes to be installed in new developments. And then on the next page, he says he has no problem with this, with the new revised plans.
Okay.
I apologize, I didn't see it.
So, you know, the plans speak for themselves, and they were really technical revisions. Certainly, if you have questions about them, you can ask our expert tonight. Again, we really feel as though this is just a brief sum-up and cleaning up, and we don't really have much more to present. The only thing I would, if you will, in a way by summation, is we do believe that we've addressed all the questions. On the questions of the sightlines, we did go over that a lot, including with the Board last time. And I just remind you and every one of the letters from Vinassen Associates, including July 14, 2023, with his shorter write-up of the sightlines in the chart that he made. And, you know, the question came up, are those mailboxes in the, in the public right-of-way, which we believe they are, and they certainly can be moved. And Mr. Montero certainly believes that they will be moved voluntarily if necessary. And I just remind you again, and I guess I would just say two other things in anticipation of the summary that Mr. Wall, I'm sure, will give you based on the letter he sent in, and also just a comment on Ms. Harris's letter. On Ms. Harris's letter, I respect everybody's right to put in information, but Ms. Harris is a fine attorney. I've worked with her, which she worked in the Town of Falmouth. But you have experts. You have both our expert, but more importantly, the review by your own peer reviewer, and he has signed off on his satisfaction with the stormwater. So, you know, you certainly can talk about it in deliberations, but we think that we are basically in very good shape on that. As to the mailboxes, I would just say a couple of things on Mr. Wall's, Mr. Wall's submission. Most of it is repetitive, but he goes back to the legalistic question of whether or not your Chapter 199, Article, Section 199-2 about trimming or removing obstructions to sightlines such as mailboxes is a local law that you folks have jurisdiction over. I would just say a couple of things. The cases that he cites, which I'm well familiar with, they're really inapposite, as we say, they're not on point, because those cases made the distinction about state laws, certain state procedures to deal with interests in land, that the developers in those cases, where the Supreme Judicial Court said, no, 40B doesn't go so far as to allow a zoning board to do things related to a town's interest in land, related to easements and things like that. That's not the situation here at all. It's simply a bylaw that allows the town, through the Board of Selectmen, to basically order that obstructions be removed. So you can take cognizance of it, whether you put your own condition and ask that there be a hearing. If you don't feel as though you should do it yourselves, it sets up a hearing process through the police chief and the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, so-called today. And if you feel as though that's necessary, that's fine. But we don't think it's necessary because the boxes can be removed, being in the public way. The only other commentary is that our expert is satisfied, traffic expert, satisfied that there's no negative impact from the number of cars that are going to be added to the area. And just want to make sure that there's nothing else that I had to send. I guess my final comment, I'm happy to answer questions if you either start deliberating or, you know, still have questions. Excuse me. Just want to remind you that I had sent in on July 26th, a revised waiver list, which covered everything that had been raised, and gave some further explanation of the justification for the waivers, and I won't go through them all, but on the main ones that came up, the first one about Article 4, Section 240.17, which is about whether or not a building, you know, complies or not, essentially, this building, I won't read the whole thing, but in the agricultural districts, one-family detached houses are permitted, so we have now stated no waiver is needed. We are asking for dimensional waivers, as you know. And then the next one was Article 14, Section 240-66. The commentary was that we were asking for a blanket waiver, and we explained, no, we're really not doing that again. It talks about you can't erect a building or construct a building without being in compliance with the zoning bylaw. If we get waivers, we would be in compliance, but more specifically, we're not just asking for a blanket waiver. It's Schedule A, I believe it is, where we list the specific distances for setbacks or other things that we're asking for waivers from. And then I gave somewhat longer explanations as to why your Water Resource Protection District overlay, your Wildlife Corridor, and Coastal Pond Overlay District, we believe that either we're exempt or we meet the standards. And I would just refer you to my due to the letter, I believe it's June 8th. It's the, yeah, it's June 8th, and that is the details that I had put in writing. They're highlighted in red. On the Wildlife Corridor, your peer reviewer agrees that really that should be inapplicable. There's just no endangered species or habitat or anything. On the, on the Water Resource, we basically have said, as in the, in our initial filing, not your application several years ago, but we said when we filed for this modification, applicant believes that no waiver is required because under this section, the single-family use is allowed, except for uses prohibited under another subsection, and this is not a prohibited use. So the, and in any case, that's a special permit provision, and under 40B, you don't need to ask for waivers from 40B. So development permitted in the underlying district, subject to Section B prohibited uses, and the Section C special permit uses, which we don't need to worry about, single-family residential use is not prohibited. So that's why we say we comply. So that's our explanation of that. On the Wildlife Corridor, I already mentioned that. On the Coastal Pond Overlay, it has several gradations, if you will, of sensitive to, you know, even more sensitive areas, and, and in a nutshell, this bylaw simply requires that an analysis of development impact be done, which the Board has all the information to do that. And we say that the requested waivers, we already explained that the project complies with the standard for this not-mo-sensitive area within your Coastal Pond Overlay District because it's not in the nitrogen-sensitive area. Only a teeny bit of the northwest corner of the locus falls within Zone C, the state Zone 2, and none of the septic systems are in this area. So we have addressed specifically whatever concerns are raised by those particular overlay districts. In the other waivers, I don't want to in any way, you know, downplay the importance of your deliberations, but as you know, because of the need for density and scale and the number of units with a 40B, the other waivers are more technical and we think totally appropriate and don't mitigate against any safety concerns or create any adverse impacts. So I'll rest with that and happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Four questions. Start with you, Jared.
No questions.
Frank?
One question I have, I didn't see anything in any of the documents that I looked at that provides for the submission of security. We're acting as a planning board approving a subdivision, and typically, under Chapter 4181U, the developer provides some kind of security. How is that going to be handled?
Certainly, very good question, and what I often do, but I know it's not your practice, is provide draft conditions for a, for a decision that we go over together, but I don't think you do that, so I can certainly happily answer. What I typically do is require for the, for the infrastructure on the project, basically conditions that say security is required if at the time of request for certificates of occupancy, certain portions of the infrastructure are not down. Commonly, it would be the final coat of asphalt, certainly can't ask for occupancy if the base coat isn't down. Sometimes seasonal nature of landscaping, some landscaping might not be completed, and other infrastructure. So if things aren't completed at that time, we would suggest that either a letter of credit or the other, the other security mechanisms in the subdivision statute that you mentioned be acceptable, be it a covenant, or what is often done is the tri-party agreement with a lender. Where a lender signs with the developer and the town that certain funds, which, you know, you wouldn't review with DPW or whomever, can reach a satisfactory, agreeable amount that would be withheld by the lender. So those are the typical mechanisms, and we certainly would be happy with a condition to that effect.
Well, I believe the statute says that the developer has the choice of what to submit, but security has to be provided here so that it protects the public in the event these, these lots are sold.
Again, we don't have, you know...
Nothing to be sold and occupied unless you've done your work.
Agreed, agreed, and we don't have any problem with it. You know, in past decisions, I think your language has been, I could, I believe the one that is not called Kendall Lane, the one that had originally been Little Pond Estates on Worcester Court in Alma. You weren't doing the board then.
I know the property, yeah.
You weren't doing the board then, but I believe that that has some language which is acceptable.
Well, I was concerned about that because they were selling lots before the street was completed, and it was...
Well, that is unusual. That is unusual. I certainly wouldn't mind a condition.
No, but I did kind of, I was kind of appalled when I found out it was happening.
Yeah, that I wasn't aware of.
The, the issue of the sightlines at the intersection of Percival Road and Trotting Park Road has been a concern of mine, and clearly, under Chapter 199, the Selectmen and the, well, the police chief, the DPW director, and ultimately, the Selectmen have a role. But one of the things that it's very clear, it requires a hearing and with notice to specific people. Are you suggesting that we would do that hearing, or?
I would leave it to you. I think you do have the power, but I'm not trying to win a legal point, understanding, of course, that you have that question, and Mr. Wall questions that. I think, it sounds like a machine gun. I hope it's not. Yep, sorry about that. You know, I think more important is, well, two things. You know, you could put in as findings of fact that that could happen, and perhaps a condition that the, that the Select Board convene a hearing with the appropriate notices. You know, I wouldn't object to that. I think that should give you great assurance that that process would be followed. But again, with those mailboxes being in the, in the right-of-way, they can be moved, either by order of either this Board, or again, without trying to push the legal point, by the Select Board and police after a hearing like that. And perhaps even in the public way, frankly, they could be done without even that hearing. So, you know, I think you can leave that to your DPW.
I got some information on that.
Because you do have the power, clearly, to stand in the shoes of the DPW, so you could make that a condition, that those be removed, standing in the shoes of the DPW for the right-of-way, public right-of-way.
I'm a little, I'm not plus by the fact that this has been known for a long time, and nobody's apparently done anything to initiate this process. To me, it would have made sense to do it some time ago, but that's neither here nor there. Okay.
Mark?
To that same point, I have some information. I was at the Emerald Properties or whatever, hearing, meeting, whatever, at East Falmouth School, and Mr. Gonzalez... School, and Mr. Gonzalez, whose daughter owns this house, was there. And we asked at the last meeting that the road layout could be staked out or whatever so we could know where they, where it was in relation to the trees. I asked him if the white flags in his yard were actually the road layout, and he had just recently had his property surveyed. He actually had it on his phone, which I sent to Ashley, but he assures me that none of those trees that we're concerned about are on his property, and he has no affinity for those trees whatsoever. So either the town or the developer can tear them out.
It's my property. It's trees.
Yeah, your manual son-in-law?
Yeah. No, I live on the opposite side.
Oh, well, I'm talking about the, the left, not, not the mailboxes. Yeah. And I mean, I, I wasn't here in the beginning of this, but I happened to be looking at this again the other night, and my major concern is turning onto Trotting Park Road from Percival. I used to occupy the house I just spoke of. I, I used to own that. And I've seen many accidents there. I saw another one last week. But looking at this plan, and I know we're nine tenths of the way down the road here, but I thought to myself, how much safer would this be if you had a one-way turning onto Percival, all the way down to Lot Nine, and you came out Harness Drive one-way, and then Lot 10, 11, 12, and 13 could be two-way? And then that would eliminate, almost eliminate, people turning on in that dangerous corner.
I'm not quick enough on my feet without the plan to do that, but I'll talk to Ed and Jack and see what I'm saying?
Because you got Harness Drive after Lot Nine?
So Harness Drive is private.
Isn't that a town easement?
No.
Private.
Private road.
Oh, Harness Drive is a private road. Oh, because there's the, the water easement there I was looking at.
Yes, there's, there's not access on.
Okay, don't wait it.
Well, that eliminates that.
Good pick out of the box.
Yeah, it would have worked, would have been a.
Any other questions?
No, at the moment, none.
Yeah, I do want to, in, in the letter that we got that Suzanne read at the beginning, a lady, I believe her name was Scala, said she found a discrepancy in the property line. Does anybody know what she's talking about? Is she here to explain it?
Trying to see if I can find if she gives it exactly.
She mentioned it in her earlier letter.
But she said that she didn't explain it.
A 10-foot discrepancy of lot lines.
She didn't mention about a basketball hoop that kept on getting moved?
She wants us to have a certified plot plan. That's her main, she does not have one.
So she's in a blatter, and I think her issue is property line between her property and the property in question here?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's the case, it may be, but of course, that's a private issue between her and my client. I'm not sure that it affects, you know, the things that are being discussed, which I understand. Obviously, safety is a totally proper concern. We, we think that it, you know, is safe and will be safe as recommended in the expert reports.
I agree, it is a per, private property matter, but if it's the line between Eco's property and hers, then maybe it extends along the whole line and everybody else's property is, that's one of the concerns I'll have.
Well, Jack, do you have any comment? Because, you know, you, there was a different surveyor, as you may recall, who passed away, but, you know, Jack can probably speak to that.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jack Landers-Collie. I'm actually the civil engineer on this project. But I did speak to before, unfortunately, Steve Doyle passed away, and now the surveyor of record is Rick Hood. You'll find in the submission that we actually show a number of encroachments by neighboring properties, and we acknowledge that that is a matter between our client and that those individuals. I don't understand what 10-foot discrepancies she's stating about. What we typically do is we ask those people who disagree to give us the information so we can either validate it and understand why they chose that delineation for the property line, or we can at least argue why we can defend the property line that is shown on the plan. Having said all that, the surveyor that did review this project found numerous monumentation that suggests that what we're showing you is absolutely correct. And there shouldn't be, I think, no question in everyone's mind that we did perform the necessary work to be able to certify to you or attest to you that what you see is accurate. If she wishes to provide us that information so we can review it, we'd be happy to.
One of the more recent letters that came into the board in opposition did reference just drainage and maintenance of the drainage systems. Can you just discuss or just let the board know what the plan will be for maintenance of the drainage elements?
Sure. Again, a typical condition is number one, that there be a homeowners association, which there will be, and number two, that there be bylaws or regulations within the homeowners' association, which will be recorded like restrictive covenants that require that the HOA maintain the common area infrastructure, which of course includes the, the drainage. So that's a typical condition, and that's what we would expect.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. On the plans, I don't see the side yards. There's no measurements on these plans. I can't tell the length of the driveways. I guess I need more stats.
I'll have Jack come up again. The remote, and I know that it probably is hard to read, especially on the smaller.
It was real hard to read back.
There are, there are several, I think, pages of the lotting plans that probably show in detail either Ed, Jim put it out or Jack, you can explain that.
But they are private yards, you know, it's no longer a condominium with exclusive areas, they're separate lots.
Well, I was, my, I was getting to my point of guest parking. I, I see none on the plan anywhere?
Yeah, there's not guest parking, doesn't have any rooms with these two cars on the, on the lots in question and the driveways.
Yeah, I couldn't tell how long the driveways are.
Okay.
I bet I could have.
That's the engineering layout of all of the, of the houses, and it gives the dimensions of the, the depths of the lot, where the house is located, and each one shows the location where the driveway is. The scale on the larger plans is one inch for every 20 feet. This is a broad a lot set of plans if you want to measure to see what, what the, what your driveways are.
Is it 40?
I'm sorry?
Is it 40?
Well, they vary anywhere from 35 to 40 feet for the, for the driveways.
So the, you're, you're, that's going to be your guest parking?
That's the parking, where you, where you go into the garages.
So there's going to be four spots, like in the yard?
It can be, yes.
Can be, yeah, okay. I was just trying to figure out, because you can't use where the fire department's going to go, and I was just trying to figure out where guest parking was going. I didn't see any, anywhere on the corner.
Well, the, the other thing is too, I mean, you can always make the, each driveway, because there's enough land to do a little T turnaround next to the driveway before you go into the garage. It's done commonly when you build a house. If somebody wants to have an extra parking area, you can always just extend the, your driveway over here to like, for example, over here to the left-hand side.
What's the impervious coverage here? I don't, I don't even know that either.
That would be on your PDA if you look at it.
Yeah, I'll look it up.
And the EDA.
Yeah. And then what else did I have? The mailboxes, you're in your private development. Are you going to make them at the house? I asked last time.
Individual, yes, they will be individual.
You definitely are, okay. It was kind of.
No, it was no, individual.
Okay, good. I think that's a good idea. And they're definitely going to be in HOA?
Yes, that's correct.
And is the HOA going to have access to the key for the access, on the fire access? How does that work?
I'm not following, following what you're saying on.
Is there going to be another access for the fire department down towards Sandwich Road, down, down the other end?
There's not any, any lock gate or anything?
There's no, nothing, it's open all the way.
There, you're looking at it right here with the, with the turnaround of the fire.
I thought there was one at the, like at the top up there. There wasn't the other plan, so that's probably what I'm thinking of.
No, it's, it's a T turnaround at, at the end of the subdivision.
They didn't have access, remember?
Yeah. And snow removal is right where the fire truck's going to turn around?
Right here, and then they back in here, come down in here.
Okay. And your water line that you're bringing into this road is going to be maintained by your HOA?
Yeah, the way, the way it works when you do the, the town water, we actually bring the town water in, we work with the town, they bring the sleeve in from the, the main on the, on Trotting Park Road, they bring it onto our property, and then once we bring in the, the town water, it actually, the town actually takes it over, you have to actually deed it back to the town.
So you have to get an easement?
We, we already have that.
You already have it? Okay.
We already have that. And then what they wanted us to do was to loop it, so what we do is we take the, we take the, take the main water line and then, then we loop it, where this line is right here, is the water line that ties into where Harness Lane is, so there's a flow of the, of the town water.
Okay. And I urge you to have a, a meeting with the mail, for the mailbox removal.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think you can just take a mailbox and slap it in. I think you have to go before the postmaster. I'm pretty sure they have like rules and regs, 36 inches off the ground and all this kind of stuff, and I, I, I'm pretty sure, I could be wrong, but I know when I did my mailbox, they were on me.
That's correct. Ed has done it in the developments.
Yeah, so you, you understand then, yeah. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Scott?
Well, I, I appreciate everybody at board's questions, getting towards the end of this. It was 16 homes at one time, and now we're at 12. The critical path items that we've kind of reviewed, the line of sight, stormwater, fire department is, is all okay with everything, so I think that all my questions have been answered, so thank you.
Just to follow up on Suzanne's question about visitor parking, how wide are the garage? It's a single-car garage, how wide is it?
The, I'll bring it, hold on a second.
Was it 12 feet?
Hold on. Usually around 16 to 18 feet because the, hold on, let me bring it up.
If it, if it's 16, 18 feet, that, that's fine, but will you, because of the visitor, there we go, visitor parking needs, will you actually build a side area? Will that be part of the plan?
We, we can, if that's a requirement, we can.
Will you commit to something like that?
Absolutely. I mean, 90% of the houses that I do, the people in the air with the driveway going in, one is 781 West Foundland Highway that we completed.
It just seems to make a lot of sense, safety-wise. I mean, normally you would never get a road this long with a T for the fire department. Normally, you'd never do that, but it just seems to make sense that you provide some additional parking spaces for visitors, and certainly you could do that.
Ed has said it's okay, so even though we're in Macho, it would be okay with a condition that obviously you approved the plan prior to, you know, building permanent. It would be fine.
Thank you.
Mark, you can follow up?
Jerry, what's, what's the name of that stuff you have on the right-hand side of your house that you reinforced the turf with?
It's, it looks like lattice, but it's about two inches thick.
Yeah, it has a name.
I forget what it is.
What were you trying to, what are you trying to do?
Yeah, grass grows through the.
Yeah, the impervious reinforced.
Yeah, I, if.
It's also more attractive than asphalt.
Oh, grass comes right through it, doesn't look like, I didn't know you looked at my house that much.
Huh? Oh, I noticed, it's all grown in now, you can't see it anymore.
Forest pavement or grass.
Yeah. It has a name, I don't know the name, but couldn't you do that at the edge of the driveway, the edge of the road, simpler and easier?
Hold on, let me bring it up.
For one parking space?
Hold on. Okay, so looking at this house right, so what are you saying then?
At the, at the end of the driveway, at the edge of the road.
Right here, already, already.
Yeah, all the way up there, yeah, just a, a space there with that impervious stuff that Jerry, it's just lattice work. You lay down and the grass grows through it.
It's concrete lattice work.
Yeah, it's concrete lattice. It has a name and I don't recall it, but that seems to be the simplest way out to get a, a second, you know, an extra parking space, be at the end of the driveway.
That's fine.
You, you lay it out and hide your seat over it and.
Location is, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, right, right at the edge of the driveway where it meets the road, you know, a parking space so they could pull right up. I think that would be the easiest way out of it.
The drive, I may ask, follow, are the driveways paved or are they stowed?
On the, on the, on the plans we have, they're, it's supposed to be paved.
No, I have a, just suggesting that, you know, that at the end of the driveway where it meets the road, if they wanted to use them, they could. If they didn't, it'd be, it seems to be the simplest way out of it, and then you do have, every place would have a guest parking spot, wouldn't interfere with the driveway.
That lattice option would not affect the total lot coverage either.
No, no, because it's, it's impervious. For the first four or five years at Jerry's house, you could see the, like the hatchwork, but now it's grown right up and it's, it's cheap, quick, and easy.
It's not cheap.
Wasn't cheap.
You just rented like Abby's house.
Yeah. Can you follow up on this stuff? No. Public comment.
So we're, we're, we're ready, we're, we're concluded, so thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney, and as the board knows, I represent three direct abutters to the project. It's clear that this is going to be the last hearing, at least it seems that way, and so this is essentially my summation, I'll be very brief. What I want to say is that this project was initially proposed in December of 2020, and after 16 months and 12 public hearings, the board voted unanimously to deny the project, and the board issued a 10-page decision with 31 numbered paragraphs setting forth the findings in support of the denial. Review of that decision reveals that there are three major reasons, I think, why there was a denial. The first is, is that the applicant was proposing a type of housing that is not the type that's needed per the town's housing production plan. Secondly, the developer failed to demonstrate compliance with your coastal pond overlay district and your water resource overlay district. And third, the project was proposing a dangerous road design. And you've heard me say this before, I won't go through all the facts again, but the developer originally thought that he had access on Percival Road, and he proposed a very simple design where there was a through street from Trotting Park Road all the way down to Sandwich Road, and each one of the 16 houses had a driveway on that road. There was no need for a drainage system, at least not the kind that you see here. There was no need for a cul-de-sac because it wasn't a dead-end road, but he didn't have rights to that, and he had to change it on the fly. After the denial occurred, the developer appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee, and as you know, there was a mediation session, and there was an agreement that the developer would come back with a modified project. And in our view, from the abutters' perspective, this provided the, the opportunity for the developer to have, you know, the proverbial second bite at the apple. And in my view, the board's denial decision clearly expressed what the board's concerns were, essentially gave the developer a roadmap on how to persuade the board to, to obtain an approval. However, if you go back to those three fundamental reasons for denial that I cited, this proposed project that's before you now does not address them. It's still the wrong kind of housing. The housing production plan says that the town is in need of one- and two-bedroom rental units and barrier-free units, which are, I think are for handicapped individuals. The proposed project proposes three-bedroom owner-occupied units. The last time around, the board asked the developer, point blank, please change that. The developer said no. He had the opportunity to change it, he chose not to, and he's back before you with 12 owner-occupied three-bedroom units. The second primary reason was your coastal pond and water, water resource district, and the, the board faulted the developer last time for not proposing any nitrogen removal as part of his proposal. He's back again with 12 conventional Title V systems without any proposal to re- He's back again with twelve conventional Title V systems without any proposal to reduce nitrogen. So we would respectfully suggest he had an opportunity to change, he didn't. He still doesn't comply with the intent and spirit of the two overlay districts at issue. And furthermore, in the time that's gone by since the first application, we've read numerous articles, and even before, about the terrible problem on Cape Cod with nitrogen loading, and I, I put this in my letter that I just recently submitted to you. The DEP in June of this year passed new regulations applicable to Barnstable County that require towns to do one of two things. One, order everybody that has a conventional Title V septic system to just stop using it and put in nitrogen, nitrogen removal technology. Or the town has to apply for what's called a watershed permit and demonstrate to the DEP how the town, over the next twenty years, is going to address its nitrogen. And against this backdrop, the applicant is still proposing twelve conventional Title V septic systems. And I would just suggest he's being tone deaf to what the needs of the community are. And the third reason for denial was the dangerous road design, and we've seen the developer make two changes. The T turnaround the last time was a few houses short of the end, and the board was concerned that that would create a confusing way of turning around, and he's moved it to the end of the road, and he also has modified the intersection with Percival Road by separating it, it was a little bit, last time it was parallel and very close to where the turning point was, and he's moved it away. However, that intersection still requires the same waiver that was asked for the last time regarding the turning radius, and also the proposed road is still a thirteen-hundred-foot dead-end street with a T turnaround and not a cul-de-sac. No second means of egress is being proposed. And lastly, there's still the issue with the site triangles. I've laid out my legal argument in my letter, I won't get into it too deeply tonight, but basically, the developer's argument is that when the zoning board stands in the shoes of its comprehensive permit granting authority, it stands in the shoes of all other local boards to give permits and approvals. And it stands in the same respect as all of the boards when they're acting on an application. And so what does that all mean in English? It means you can give any permit that any other town, any town board can. You can give a board health permit, a subdivision permit, a zoning permit, a wetlands permit, et cetera. But Chapter 199 is not a permit or an approval, and it doesn't have an application process. The process begins when the police chief and the DPW director file a report with the board. Then the board can hold a hearing after it notifies all interested parties, and then the board can issue an order to private parties to remove vegetation. Essentially, the way I understand what the developer's asking is, he's asking this board to give him permission to enter onto private property and remove vegetation. And I would respectfully submit, that's not what 40B allows, and without that kind of authority, the site triangles are obstructed. Their own engineer said they were, and so that problem remains. So in substance, in summary, what I simply am saying is that this board thought long and hard the last time, identified the major problems with the project. You have a project with four fewer houses, but all the same fundamental problems, and I would suggest that the developer had an opportunity to change it, and he didn't. And therefore, I would respectfully suggest you should deny the project like you did the first time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Sir?
I have a question.
Jerry, go ahead.
It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, what you're saying, this board can stand instead for the board of health to approve a septic tank or the Conservation Commission to issue NOIs?
Yes.
I disagree, but, you know, but just saying, you think it does.
I think that it does. And for example, it could stand in the shoes of the board of selectmen in their zoning capacity to get permits, but what I'm saying is, under Chapter 199, it's fundamentally different, it's not a permit and an approval, it's a different type of authority that's beyond purview of 40B.
I have one, I have one question, too. Instead of outright denying this, what should we include in this? Should we require that to be a denitrification system? Should we require that it not be a dead end? I don't understand how we can just outright deny it at this point, I'm, I'm new to this. Didn't come in at the beginning of this thing, but what could we actually do that's gonna be productive here, rather than just outright deny it and, and go through whatever we have to go through for that? That's my concern, is.
Yeah, I'm gonna answer it, and, and I say this with all due respect, I don't mean to be disrespectful.
No, I, I understand that.
It's not the abutters' job to design the project for the developer, he has to come before you and persuade you that he's made a safe project, and my follow-up to that is, I would respectfully submit to you that you're not in a position where you have to approve this. The process that will happen after the hearing closes is the board has to go through a process where it reviews each one of the waivers. And I understand this board's practice is to review them line item by line item, and you have to look at the waiver being requested, which is, let's, let's think about what that is philosophically. It's asking to have the board waive specific requirements that are set forth in all of your regulations and bylaws and et cetera. And under Chapter 40B, there's a recognition that the town's zoning bylaw, wetlands bylaw, all its rules and regulations are what are called local concerns, and you have to weigh the request for the waiver to have a waiver from that regulation against what that concern was, and you have to do a balancing test and say, is the affordable housing need greater than the local concern embodied in your regulations? And our argument is that this project triggers certain local concerns and regulations that are safety-based. That, this isn't a question of, of aesthetics, that saying like, oh, we don't want to look at these twelve houses or these sixteen houses. We're making arguments to you that this project will threaten the environment, it will threaten groundwater, it will threaten the environment, it will threaten safety through the road system, and therefore, my response to you is, is that you shouldn't approve the project.
Thank you.
Last response to that, too, bearing in mind, by right zoning in this particular area is two houses. That, that's what, if, if someone respected the town's rules and regulations, that's what will be developed here.
Back on. Frank, you have a question?
Brian? I, I have a question for you, and I'd also invite a response from Mr. Freeman, too. What about if the board were to have a condition that at the intersection of Percival Road and Trotting Park Road, the developer provide a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot sightline, as it's been suggested, and also at the intersection of Rosewood Lane and Percival, there'd be an eighty-foot sightline, and let Mr. Montero figure out how to get it done?
That, that would be something I think that is within the authority of the board. The, the decision the last time is of interest, in this particular regard, the board found that the site triangles were obstructed, and then used the language that the developer had failed to come forward with consent from the town and from the property owners. So I think what you're basically saying is, is that the board would impose that as a condition and then leave it to Mr. Montero to figure it out.
Mr. Freeman?
I can't a hundred percent agree, although I certainly applaud the thinking, but I do believe that what our expert information shows from Vanas Associates is that we do already have that. Again, if the only issues were the question of the vegetation, which I think has been handled, it can be removed, and likewise on the mailboxes. So I, I think, I think, I'm looking at the chart, you know, we have two-hundred-and-fifty required, which is what you said on Trotting Park, and eighty feet on the other Percival, just the Percival section up into the subdivision. So, you know, I think, in a way, it begs the question, I mean, the condition that would be more appropriate is that the clearing of mailbox and vegetation as per the Vanas Associates letter, it's July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, take place. Because it's already a given, you can make a finding to that effect, that we have those site distances subject to what Mr. Vanas said in that letter, which is just those minor clearing of vegetation in the mailboxes.
But it hasn't been done.
I, I understand, but that would give us the opportunity to verify with the DPW, which we had honestly thought they were already gonna say something, that those mailboxes can be ordered to be removed. Or Mr. Montero, I think, has had conversations and could be done voluntarily.
You also have a tree south of the intersection that, at least when I was there, appeared to block the intersection at the curve, block the view at the curve. Well, in other words, I'm just suggesting.
Yeah.
Just suggesting that we tell Mr. Montero what we want and let him figure out how to do it.
Well, I understand, but when the, the example, the most recent example you said of that tree, I think that was discussed directly by Mr. Dirk, and the fact is, he, he doesn't believe that that's creating the obstruction that mitigates negatively against the required line of sight. So, you know, if we can craft something that is clear enough, that doesn't leave it ambiguous and subject to interpretation, that may be okay, but, you know, just conceptually, we have to address the issue of what is cited as some vegetation that can be trimmed, not that tree, and the mailboxes. If, I, I know there may be others to speak, just if I could briefly, while it's in my head, responding to just a few of the things Mr. Wall said. As to Title V, although it's true that DEP has new regulations, but that's the developer's hunt. We still don't believe that any of those changes will affect things, but clearly, this project will have to comply with any DEP regulations that are in effect on Title V. And I would reiterate as to that point, as well as all the coastal pond, pond and water resource. If you read your own bylaws, the overlay districts, they're all couched in terms of nitrogen-sensitive areas. And being redundant, but as we said, and it's verified by your engineer and everybody, that the houses and the septic systems are not in any nitrogen-sensitive area. Now, in answer to the question from that end of the board, we don't think it's appropriate, but, you know, could you? Could you order that the nitri, that the septic systems be denitrification systems? You could. We don't think it's appropriate, but I'm not gonna get in a fight over it, you have the, the power to do that, whether it ultimately would make the project uneconomic. You know, we've been through the appeal, the last thing we're looking for is an appeal, but, you know, the answer is, is you could, and we would weigh that as to whether, you know, is feasible for the project, so we're not proposing to change it, but that's the reason that it wasn't changed. And the other aspects as to adverse impacts, negative impacts, that Mr. Wall cites, I would just say that that's the whole purpose of having had substantially redesigned plans that have been thoroughly peer-reviewed, both by your peer reviewer and by the town departments, and there have been no negative comments by the town departments, including on the fire safety, no need for a second egress, the fire chief is satisfied with that turnaround. So although the concept that Mr. Wall raises as to health and safety issues, certainly, that's what you're here for, to protect the public, but as you know with 40B, whether it's twelve houses instead of two, that's the nature of the beast because of the nature of the cost of housing and needing to create the density and the scale of, of development and the costs so that it can be feasible. And I guess I'll end with just a few words, which, you know, I hope are meaningful. Not in lieu of all the considerations that you are properly considering, but there will be three families that will be benefited. And, you know, there is a need for all kinds of housing, there's nowhere that it's written that for sale housing is no longer needed. Three families will be helped by being able to finally afford a home on Cape Cod. Again, I don't say that so that you guys say, oh, that's right, who cares about all the other things, quite the contrary. But we sincerely believe that with all the expert review revisions to plans, that it is now a perfectly safe and approvable project. It's a meaningful reduction, sixteen units down to twelve, so I would end with that, and thank you for your consideration.
Can you keep that up there for me, for my, for my public comment, please? You just had, do you mind keeping that up there for my, for my public comment? I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, the traffic.
Do you want to come on and talk?
No, wait, wait for him to respond.
Well, I'll put it up.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, I just simply wanted to reply to that comment. I think, I want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. The Vanas plan shows site triangles that the engineer says are required by the traffic standards, but the engineer in his own written materials concedes that they're obstructed and says in his letter that the, the vegetation can be trimmed or removed, subject to receipt of all necessary rights, permits, and approvals. So as Mr. Duffy said, the, the site triangles aren't clear, they need to be cleared, and there's a disagreement between us over Chapter 199. Final point about that, there's been a lot of talk about the mailboxes being moved and new mailboxes being put into the new development. My understanding from speaking to my clients is that the reason that the mailboxes are where they are is because the post office won't go up Percival Road. And so when the, all this talk is about moving the mailboxes, where are they gonna be moved to? That, that's a question that I think is only fair to the people that live in the neighborhood, be resolved, that they have a place to get their mail.
Good evening. Um, my name's Jessica, I live at one ninety-seven Percival Road. The property that has all of the mailboxes at the end of Percival Road. And I actually went to the post office shortly after moving into my home to talk to the postman about the mailboxes to find out if we could move them, if we could make it safer, before this was even going down. To which Mike at the East Falmouth Post Office told me, no. That it's an easement, that he doesn't have drivers that will drive down Percival, and that I just have to deal with it. So that is definitely out there, that, that, that is going on. The other thing is the safety. As a mom of that area, we frequently, it is terrifying driving. Not just that curve, but like Trotting Park in general is a very dangerous road. And Percival itself, at four PM yesterday, just walking with my two young children, there was fifteen cars that went down Percival, and it's a one-lane road. So there, one of them, like, has to back up, it, it's just not a safe situation as it is right now. So adding in additional traffic, I know that there was the plan put forward, the safety protocol, but I just don't, I don't agree. I don't think that this plan will have no effect on our livelihood and the traffic happening at that road. I just think these things should be addressed before approving something like this.
We just have your last name for the record, please, ma'am.
Jessica Kowal.
Thank you.
If I may just really quickly, while that goes down. You know, the, although we disagree with that comment, but I understand a neighbor's concern. Area on Percival now is two lanes, it's gonna be approved only if it enters for the project, but it actually will make it two lanes, which speaks largely to what you just said.
Yeah, thanks so much. So.
Can you just speak in the microphone? Speak from the microphone.
You gotta speak from the mic. My name's Robert Kowal, I'm one of the abutters, I live at one ninety-seven Percival Road. The mailbox is in question, and the vegetation in question is on our property, that was my wife speaking a minute ago. I'd like to point out a few things from this lovely map here. So we got mailboxes, and we've got the vegetation, and as you can see, the curve comes out right there, and it's interesting, we're here, five years into this project, we're back. This was all the same things that got this project rejected a year ago, we're talking about the same things again. How much more time, how much more energy, how much more money and resources are we gonna put into this project before we move on? And to Mr., is it Mr. Petrucci, to your question, what are we supposed to do, can we, we can't just reject this. The previous board did just reject this because the developer came here time and time again. What was it, twelve meetings? Twelve meetings, and couldn't answer the same basic questions that affect our neighborhood. Traffic safety, right there, is still not addressed. The only, what they've proposed is that they're gonna cut down that trees and move the mailboxes, that we can't even get the, the mailman to consider moving. They laughed at us when we said, hey, can we bring the mailbox to our house, they will not go down that road. So it seems like somebody should at least get the, the post office here, by the way, that's a federal easement, it's the post office, not a town easement. So they'd have to get the post office to come down here and agree. So, they'd have to get the post office to come down here and agree to move the mailboxes before you could approve. As far as cutting down my trees and my vegetation, like, nobody's asked me. The developer, I've been living there now three years. Nobody's even come to talk to us about this. And the fact that the developer hasn't talked to the neighbors about solutions, that you talk about solutions, come talk to us. You could potentially offer to purchase an easement through our property or purchase the property itself to solve that problem. But it's been three years, and I was at a hearing two years ago, December. So, I'm pretty well obvious who I am. Nobody's come and talked to us, and that should tell you something. It should tell you that the developer doesn't care about the neighbor's concerns. Doesn't care about the board's concerns, which got him rejected a year ago, right? He keeps coming with different versions of the same project that doesn't address the three major questions that the attorney brought up, right? We're talking about nitrogen, we're talking about the environment, we're talking about traffic safety. And if you think that is going to solve traffic safety, Trotting Park is already dangerous. Like, my wife says she fears for her life, but it's not just us. We have two kids. There's two more here, two more there, two more there, and dozens down Percival Road. Children, young children, that have to go in and out of that street or go to the bus stop. And we're talking about adding 12 more families, potentially as many as 24 additional vehicles, into that intersection every single day. So, it very, the minimum, this is going to create a congestion mess. At the worst, though, it's going to create tragedy, right? Some kid's going to get hit by a car because of this mess. And that's going to be on all of us who are here today, who are going to let this happen. I'm not saying that, like, it's not my decision. You guys made the right decision when you rejected it. And here we are again because whatever state bylaws. The final thing I would say is, 40B is the only reason we're having this conversation, right? Otherwise, this project doesn't meet any of the requirements for this land area, for this land use, the type of house. 40B is the only reason. Are we sure that 40B still applies? There have been several 40B projects approved in Falmouth in the last year since the board rejected this development. Are we sure the 40B still applies here? And if we don't know the answer to that question, can you approve this project without checking? Like, are we sure we still meet the requirements for need in Falmouth 40B, aside from all the other problems? And when you answer that question around 40B, I mean, this whole thing goes out the window. And if it doesn't, we still come back and we still try to solve these problems because apparently it's up to all of us to create a safe project design for this developer. I don't think that's my job. My job is just to live there and do my own job and be a good citizen and good neighbor to my neighbors, doing the best we can. But it's their job to provide a safe project, and it's still five, what, it's five years in for this thing? They still can't do that. So, I recommend, humbly recommend, that you go check on whether or not 40B still applies here. If it doesn't, this thing needs to go away. And even if it does, it's not safe. They still haven't addressed the environmental concerns. And whether or not 40B aggregates those concerns, like, we have a commitment to our environment, to our land, to Falmouth. Like, we know what's going on with Point Bay, we know what happened in Eel Pond, we know what's going on in Green Pond. We don't think 12 more septic system's going to affect that. We also know the town of Falmouth is working on a sewage treatment project to create sewers for the whole town. Maybe we hold a higher bar on these things until that is enacted. Thank you for listening. I really appreciate it, and I hope you guys will do the right thing again.
Other public comment?
I guess I have a couple of points for the board. There's been some reference to this driveway being called Rosewood Lane. However, it's a private driveway and not a road, so it would not have a name. You know, the development could have a name, but the driveway will not be named. We cannot override conservation or Board of Health. And just from the gentleman's question about 40B. We are not currently in a state where we can deny a development because we don't have enough housing that we've created at this point in time.
We're a long way off.
Mrs. Chairman, if I may, just real, just real quickly, because I agree with what Noreen just said. We're not asking for waivers, and correct me if I'm wrong with my team, but we're not asking for waivers from the Board of Health. The 40B does not allow a zoning board to override Title V, which Board of Health administers, nor does it allow a zoning board to override the State Wetlands Protection Act administered by the Conservation Commission. But if there were local wetlands bylaws, you could. Likewise, with Board of Health regulations that are more stringent than the state. But we're not asking for any waivers related to anything like that. So, you know, just wanted to make that point because, again, we think we have addressed everything in their much more standard kind of subdivision and lot size kinds of waivers. So, I'll just end with that. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman, can I ask you a quick question? The list that we're going to go over of your waivers is first dated March 15th and then July 26th, correct?
26th is the update, yes.
It's got six bullet points and then 10, or 10 under subdivision.
Correct.
And that's your final?
Yes.
Revised list?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Procedurally, Noreen, do we need to close before discussion? Discussion first.
Close.
I don't know if the board wants to have some conversation before you close.
I would suggest that it's a good idea.
What was that? I didn't hear what she said.
They have discussion before we close.
If you want.
Before or after? What's the difference?
Contemplating going ahead voting this tonight, it seems to me we have an awful lot of work to do to go through this.
I'm worried about the waiver list. I just said to him, "Are we doing this before we do the waiver list?" I mean, I just feel we may have questions on the waiver list, myself.
Maybe that's the first place to start with our discussion, then.
Yeah. We can.
Take it away. Sorry.
Why don't we just start with more discussion in general, and then get into waivers?
Okay.
Start on this end this evening. Tony?
I'm going to, if I may, defer until a little bit into this.
Certainly. Scott?
Do we want to go just to the waivers and start that?
Either with waivers or just in general, if you have reservations?
In general, I, we have enough information. In general, I think that we have the same concerns that we've heard from the abutters, from the, from council. We have to make sure that these lines of sight are safe, and we can hopefully condition that to make sure that we protect as many people as we can through the conditioning of, if it's to move forward with an approval. So, we're hearing everybody's concerns here, and I want, I want the folks to understand that. Noreen also pointed out that this is a 40B, and there are certain restrictions that we have on ourselves. So, we're trying to do the best we can with what we've had. So, I'm ready to jump into the waivers as soon as people make their comments.
I have huge concerns with Trotting Park. I, myself, go down Sandwich Road to take Brook Hill to go home because I don't like Trotting Park because I get nervous every time. Now, this is not going to make it any better. I do have a concern when Noreen brought up that it is a driveway, safety-wise. When the fire department is called, it's not going to be to Rosewood Lane. It's going to be to what? I, that part I don't quite understand.
Rosewood condos, whatever he calls it.
Rosewood condos?
This is a private driveway, so it will not be under the town's control.
Right.
So, because it's not a road, it's not having to be to town specifications regarding width and how it's specifically constructed, et cetera, because that will all be under the HOA, and they'll have to maintain it, et cetera.
So, it'll be like one Rosewood to me?
Fire Department separately has looked at the proposal, and according to them, they are satisfied that they are able to manage.
A private drive. Okay.
Somebody in the truck is going to know where it is.
You know, they'll sign an address.
And then the other concern I have is definitely the mailboxes, and I do feel they should be with the selectmen, whoever needs to be involved.
So, we can condition that?
Yeah, definitely.
If I can interrupt, just a point of order. We did design this road to comply to the local standards adopted by the DPW. So, the pavement thickness, the subbase, all of it complies. Oh, okay, no, a comment was made that.
Getting killed, that's all.
It may, it may require a waiver, though. You do not require a waiver.
Thank you. Sorry.
My concerns, I think, after with sightlines clearing out. The concern is it relates to the affordable units with septic, with the change in Title V regulations. I would hate to see an affordable unit go in, and then six months later, if the town suddenly says, "We're not going to pursue a wetlands permit," to then be required to have to put in a D-Nite system. So, I don't know what the board's appetite is, at least it's the affordable units to require D-Nite systems and those. I just, again, I'd hate to see an affordable unit get saddled with a huge bill after moving in because Title V has been a shift.
But you can split it.
You know, I don't necessarily know if we want to put, acquire the application for all D-Nite systems, but at the very least, I would suggest perhaps to the affordable or something along those lines.
So, I guess, sorry, just to that point, these are all going to be private systems that are going to be monitored and maintained by the homeowner. And I know that there are specific requirements relating to D-Nites and monitoring that needs to be done, testing, and that there's a.
There is a greater cost, but.
Two grand a year, just for monitoring.
I'm not happy with the, sort of the regulations, but.
But we don't know where it's going to go yet.
I understand, but I just, I'd hate to see an affordable unit suddenly have to saddle, have to put an entirely new system in a year or two into buying it. It's just, I'm not pushing one way or the other. I'm just, just a consideration to discuss.
Signed up petition article this morning, and I think you're going to see something.
I can't hear you, Mike.
I, I signed up petition article this morning, and there's something potentially coming down the road that's going to alleviate, quite potentially going to alleviate a lot of this at greatly reduced cost.
I mean, the upkeep yearly?
No, it's a complete system that was designed by George Eufelder in Falmouth, and it's well along the way. And it simply requires that the homeowner replace the leach, leaching field with its later K system. And I hadn't heard much of it, but I did just last night, this morning, discuss with people. And it's far down the line to being approved. And these D-Nite systems aren't. The testing is $500 every three months, two grand a year. I think, and the majority of them stink. And I think saddling any affordable home with one of those things, if we don't have to and we're not mandated to, I think, is going down the wrong road.
I just don't want to saddle somebody with a $20,000 bill for a new system, though. That's the only, that's my concern. Overall, what are your feelings about the project?
Well, I'll start with Brian's, or Mr. Wall's, three points. As far as the wrong houses, I mean, yes, we need most two-bedroom rentals. But nowhere in the housing production plan does it say that we don't need three-family houses for families. And furthermore, the other nine houses are needed in this town as well. And you're talking about 2.34 units per acre. That's pretty exceptional for a 40B. And like, we just addressed the Title V. We don't know where that's going to go yet. And I think saddling anybody, and especially an affordable unit, with something that potentially is no good. I'm sorry, they're no good, and they cost two grand a year to maintain, and that would be on the homeowner. I, I think, the future isn't known yet, and I think saddling anybody with one of those, in my opinion, is wrong. And as far as the T-turn and the safety, the fire department says it's okay. Isn't that what we're concerned with the most? I mean, fire safety? And if the mailboxes are on each individual house, which I know, I know the engineering, the engineering department has the ability to dictate that, don't they? Then the mail truck would be going further down the road. So, perhaps those mailboxes could all be moved at that point. And also, the mailboxes, as well as all the foliage, trees blocking, blocking the sightline, are all in the town road layout. So, we can condition that they be moved. And I mean, the Board of Selectmen has the power to license or not license them or have them removed anyway. I mean, I really don't, sure, I wouldn't want it on, you know, it's a dangerous corner as it is, but if we remove the shrubbery and, and condition that it not be replaced, and however you go about moving those mailboxes, I guarantee you they're in the road layout so that we have the power to condition that they be moved.
I don't know if we have the power to the post office. That's the only.
No, I, if it's in the road layout, the Board of Selectmen, it's their purview.
But some of them are on private property.
I, I think they're in the road layout.
No, they're on my, they're on the land.
But your, the road layout is.
Forty feet.
Forty feet, so I think you're incorrect. But it requires a survey. I mean, we asked for it last time. I ran into the homeowner, and he assured me that all of those trees were on the town road layout, not on his private property. The one I was concerned about is 23.8 feet from it, or his property line is 23.8 feet from the front of his house, and that tree is another five feet past. He assures me that they're not on his property, and I mean, he just had a survey. Those white flags were put there, and he had a few tags left over from the survey last year when he did a septic system. So, those white flags are fairly accurate. I mean, this guy builds, he's a builder. He knows his stuff. So, I don't see that as an issue. And those were my major concerns.
I share the concern of all the other members about the traffic situation with the intersection of Trotting Park Road and Percival Road. Also, the, I want to make sure that there's adequate sightlines where the now unnamed road enters Percival Road. I don't think I've heard a satisfactory answer to the issue of drainage and screening along Percival Road. It's been talked about, but that's, I don't think I've heard a satisfactory answer to my satisfaction anyways. The septic system is an issue which I'm concerned with because of the Water Resource Protection District. But I would note that this project was planned some time ago, and all of the events that have been referred to tonight happened only a couple of weeks ago, when we were told that, that we may be facing big changes in our septic system rules on Cape Cod. I don't think we can drape that on the developer right now. And also, the, the type of housing, we, this board has approved homeownership projects on a regular basis. They seem to come before this board regularly. The town wants rental units, the developers want to build homeownership, and I don't know that we have any, any ability or authority to control what it is. They submit the plans and we approve them. Those are my major concerns.
Jerry?
I think the project, and I'm not going to repeat what everybody said, is approvable, quote-quote, with conditions. I think there's some things we can straighten out. I'm concerned, and don't take it personally, that a member discussed this project outside this board. I think it's open meeting law violation.
I don't believe so.
I just, from what I understand, discussing anything that's going to confront this board is, should be sensitive nature, at least publicly disclosed. I think it's confusing and not within our ability to try to decide what is the proper D-Nite system. The town's been going after this for 20 years. The layering system, not 20, at least 10, the layering system's been around for a while, and I don't think we should be prospective on what we think the law's going to do. The cost, yes, but I don't think it's appropriate. The cost, yes, but I don't think it's appropriate to require D-Nite systems based on what I know now and the lack of any definitive decision by the town, Board of Selectmen, or the Water Quality Committee of where nitrogen-sensitive areas are. That's it.
Thank you. Just one quick point that Mr. Duffy raised. We did say last week, maybe we weren't clear, or not last week, the last hearing, as to the area of the drainage that is going to cut down substantially and can't be replanted, and there was concern about, therefore, no buffer. We did say, and I'll repeat here, that for approximately the 300-foot length where there would be vegetation cut down and not replanted, we would agree to a fence there. There was discussion as to whether a fence should be the entire, roughly 1,000-plus linear feet, which we don't agree to, I would hope you don't think that's necessary, but we, we absolutely would agree to a fence to block the area that would be where those drainage facilities are. Thanks.
Well, I, if you said that, that's fine. I don't remember that myself, but that's...
Well, that's why I repeat, that's why I repeated it. I know, there was a lot, there was a lot said, and, believe me, I don't remember everything either.
That's good.
They agreed to it, so we can condition it.
Hi, Pat Harris. Just a couple of brief comments. A lot of the difficulties we're having here is that we do not have a licensed surveyor stamp on all the details of this property. One of the things that our engineering department suggested is that certain areas where there's confusion be blown up, i.e. the intersections to, rather than just hearing what people believe is the layout of Trotting Park Road, have a survey done, a licensed surveyor stamp it, show it. And I do know that there are plans that are in the record that show that I think nine of the 13 saved mailboxes are on La Cowals property. There's only four or five of the mailboxes that are in what was shown as a layout, but it was shown as an estimate. And I think for you to do your job with some confidence, one of the conditions should be that you get some better plans that are stamped by a surveyor. And there's one additional property issue, and, and again, it would address the issue raised by Jennifer Scala about her claim that that lot line is not accurate. But if you look at the subdivision plan that was most recently, it's, it's actually identified as an index plan. If you look at that, you can see that where the road, the private road for this development comes out and intersects with Percival Road, if you take a right, when you first come out, it's two-lanes, and then it narrows up at the curve going down the north-south direction. But you will see on that plan that was recently submitted to you that the road, there's an attempt by the developer to merge that two-lane into a one-lane right at the curve. But to even accomplish that odd design, they're using land owned by the Overholzers. You know, that's, that's a problem unless these plans are improved. And lastly, I do believe that our engineering department did a fabulous job for the first set of hearings as it related to the stormwater drainage. Scott Schulte wrote three very lengthy and detailed reports. As I said in my letter, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the just off-the-hand comments that it's been approved. A lot has changed in, you know, if you're putting in conditions, that could be another one, that there's another review by the, the town's engineer to confirm that the stormwater drainage is proper. I mean, casual statements about increasing impervious surfaces by doubling driveways for 13 homes, 14 homes, excuse me, I don't know how, I don't know much about stormwater drainage, but I do know that as you increase impervious areas, you need to compensate somewhere to, to store that water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Yeah, I'd like to offer a couple of comments. I, I think she doesn't fully, the...
Ms. Harris, I get...
Yeah. Doesn't fully understand exactly the process of what went on. And so I'll take a minute just to explain it. When this project was originally started, we, it was started as a condominium concept. It then changed to a subdivision. In the course of doing that, we required to use the design guidelines published by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That is what the drainage engineer utilized when designing this project. That takes into account the size of the lots, the average lot coverage by pervious and impervious structures. So inherently, everything we're talking about has already been built into his design. The published report is in excess of 100 pages. It was submitted, and I don't know the history of where it resides within the town of Falmouth or the, this particular applicant, but it is, it has been submitted. Also, the plans used to determine the flow of the water and ultimately the drainage itself was endorsed by a land surveyor, so I just want you to understand that has been done. The drainage, I don't know if it's clear that the drainage is entirely underground, and I think there's been a misconception that people may see this, with the exception of by lot 12 and 13, the entire drainage system is underground. It complies, again, with the standards by the, that are prescribed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Do you have a vote, excuse me, public comment?
Just in furtherance to his point, they're using the same drainage system that was designed for a project 25% larger, so there should be no inadequacy.
Mr. Freeman, I heard you, you mentioned that you'd spoken to one of the neighbors at the corner of Trotting Park, and...
Yeah, where the white flags were laid out, we had the questions...
The one on the left side.
Yeah, on the left side.
So, you...
231.
Okay, so that's the one, you, so we're, you guys are satisfied the sightlines are okay on that side?
Once the trees are removed.
Got it. What about the trees on my side, and the mailboxes on my side?
Well, they're, they're in question, and it's a 40-foot road layout. Now, I mean, we did ask that the, the road layout be staked out before this next meeting. It didn't happen.
Yeah.
But, I mean, 40 feet, I, you know, I'm familiar with it, I was over there.
Yeah.
I, I, I honestly believe that a lot more than three of those mailboxes are within the road layout.
So...
And I think also that if they decide to put individual mailboxes in this development, the mail, the, the mail's going to have to be delivered down there, and then it's going to change the whole outlook anyway, but, I mean, these...
Those, those mailboxes are for people on the dirt road, and that's why they won't go past that spot.
But they're already going to go past, past that spot to go to the Rosewood...
They're going to go about five feet past that spot. So, it's...
There's going to be individual mailboxes on the houses.
Your opinion, my opinion being what it is, we're not the mailman, we're not the post office, so maybe we should get them down here to weigh in on what they will do and what they can do, what they're willing to do before we talk about that. But my concern is that you keep talking about sightlines on the left side, but nobody's talking about the sightlines on the right side. So, if you guys are saying that as a condition of approving this project, they have to figure something out with regards to my property, I'm telling you right now, like, what are we figuring out? Nobody's even talked to us. What could that mean? Does that mean you guys are going to eminent domain my trees down? Does that mean that he's going to come down and cut down my trees and move my mailboxes without my permission?
If, if they're in the road layout...
I have, I think I have rights.
If they're in the road layout, that can be done.
My, my property extends 10 feet into Percival Road, so I don't know, and, and by the way, I recently had the property redrawn, I recently had an approved stamped survey done, and they marked that point in the middle of that road. So, you may, might not be correct about how far the road layout goes.
They mark the road layout all the way down your...
All the way straight down the middle of Percival Road. My, my property extends right down the middle of that road.
No, that's a private road, we're talking about Trotting Park Road.
No, I'm talking about Percival Road, which is not a private road, it's a public road.
We're talking about the sightline onto Trotting Park Road.
Correct, correct.
That brings in the town's layout, and that's where that would be.
So, so what you're saying is that 40 feet either direction or 40 feet...
From the center line.
Right, from the center line. 20 feet to the right of that isn't going to take care of your sightlines. And, and if you think that the ones on the left are a problem, the ones on the right in my property are going to be an even bigger problem, because those are actual trees, it's like major foliage, and nobody's even talked to us. Here's the other thing, like, why hasn't anybody even talked to us about this? Why hasn't the developer even come to us to talk to? It's been three, four, five years of this thing, he has not offered anything to the neighborhood. That should concern you, because you're going to conditionally approve this project, you're expecting them to fulfill those obligations. And then it puts the impetus on us to bring a lawsuit against him, to make him fulfill those obligations? What happens if they don't? We can't even get them to come and talk to us about, or, or fulfill the obligations they made to you to make the changes they were supposed to make to this project. That should give you pause. Thank you.
It is disturbing to me.
Certainly, after the board, we can go back and forth, but there are no trees on that side that's shown from all the information from the expert. It was mailboxes, yeah, not the trees on that side that the gentleman's talking about. That's fine, but I'm talking about the sightlines. So, you know, we're happy to discuss waivers or anything you'd like. I, I guess I would respectfully ask that the hearing be closed. You can deliberate, you can continue at another meeting, you know, as much as we'd like to, you know, finish and get a decision, but I respect your discussion you're having now, and you want to keep doing it tonight, but I would, I, I just think it's appropriate to close the hearing, and, you know, we've said everything, and I think everybody has said everything they want, so certainly then up to you whether you continue to talk about things tonight, so just a thought.
Would we give them information at this point?
I think we probably should close the hearing and deliberate. I don't know the way it's going, if we'll ever get enough information, but this seems to be, all due respect, point, counterpoint, you know, it's, we've had sufficient information, and I think we should close the hearing and move forward.
Frank?
I think we should deliberate and vote, close the hearing, but deliberate and vote at another meeting.
Yeah.
We're not going to get anything accomplished tonight until we clear our heads.
Fine by me, whatever the board thinks. I mean, I think the only real contention is the, are the mailboxes. The telephone pole there, that was more of a concern than any of the trees that are on that property. But the mailboxes were the biggest obstruction, and I believe the police of the Board of Selectmen, if, if it's deemed dangerous, they have the ability to move these things. It's our condition.
I didn't know, Ms. Harris asked the storm, the engineering department to look at engineering, at the stormwater management again. I didn't know if we close tonight, if we can accept anything like that.
Yeah, I'll make you close, no additional testimony will be taken.
Or information.
And Mr. Chairman, respectfully, there's been so much time and discussion and requests, and, you know, they haven't indicated anything. So, I mean, again, it's my risk, my client's risk, if you're not satisfied, but, you know, there is, again, the peer review, that maybe is why they didn't comment further, but the peer review should be satisfactory. And, you know, honestly and respectfully, you know...
Agreed, but...
We don't think it's appropriate to wait for anything more from the engineering department after all this time.
Yeah, just push a moment.
Thank you.
Well, I also feel it wasn't appropriate that Mr. Montero hadn't taken an initiative to do anything with the post office also. That should have been done a while back. He knew the four boxes were, even regardless of anyone else's boxes, the four boxes were his way.
But he said, he did, and he spoke to the postmaster, and they can be individual.
And they can what?
He stated that he spoke to the postmaster and that they can be individual.
And what were the results?
And, on his lots.
No, the four on Trotting Park.
Well, it's not up to the post office if it's on the public way. Again, you can craft a condition, I, the conditions discussed, you know, I may have to be careful as to how we look at the condition, and maybe we'd have to come back and ask you to amend it, but absolutely respect that a condition to address that is appropriate. But it's not our job to, you know, to, to talk to the post office, and if it's in the public way, the post office can't stop the town from ordering that those boxes be removed.
But we did ask...
Yeah.
That the road layout be staked out before this meeting, and that did not happen.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. I understand.
It's not our job to go to the post office.
I understand, I understand, and so, again, a condition addressing that is also probably appropriate. I discussed that with Mr. Montero, I thought it was going to be done, so, but, again, conditions, I think, can properly address things. Thanks.
Feeling, Scott? Close, or...
No, I think, yes, that we should probably close and come up with another date to go through the, the waivers and finish it off in the next meeting, hopefully.
Tony?
I think we should close, I agree with Scott. I don't think we can hear anything more at this point.
I'm in agreement with that, I believe.
Motion to close?
Motion to close by Mr. Finer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion on the motion? The regular voting members, the ones voting, those all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed, no additional testimony would be taken. We'll listen for continuance to go through requestable waivers and/or render a decision. Are we looking out for a date, Mark?
I would propose September 14th.
September 14th?
Do we like a regulatory, or an, I can't, 10-14th?
10-5? October the 5th?
When is town meeting?
That's a good question, is that, when the town meeting is?
It's not till 11th.
11th, okay, so October 5?
Is your motion to continue to October the 5th?
So moved.
You would like someone in draft to consider?
Yes.
Aren't we going to ask that the road layout be staked for that?
I don't see, no, the problem is, is that that can't be part of what you consider if it were staked, other than for your own personal edification.
We're going to know.
Because once the hearing is closed, you cannot discuss that.
So, are we going to go another meeting without the road layout staked, so we don't know where the hell we're headed?
Yep.
Doesn't sound very logical to me.
Kind of makes sense.
Unless he's going to volunteer to just do it.
You know, I, I just...
Need to open the hearing, we're going to take testimony, or...
Yeah, if, and I, it's appropriate, and, well, a former counsel is sitting...
Motion to reopen.
If, if you reopen...
One moment, please, counsel, we have a motion reopen, is there a second?
Second.
It's a second, discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing is reopened.
I was just going to say, because, again, I understand that and appreciate it, I would think, now that it's reopened, you could continue it and leave open only that one issue that the, that that area, that the public layout be staked, and that would be what would be addressed, obviously, then, any other deliberation, you know, on October 5th, but I understand that, and that would be fine. In other words, no other testament, no other testimony, just the submission of that plan.
So, I think that's the, is that the only outstanding thing for the board, see the road layout at this point?
Who's going to do the road layout, pier engineer, or the town, the town doesn't have the capacity?
We'd have to take care of it.
I just want to make sure.
Sure.
Who could we task it?
What, the...
Road layout?
We don't do it.
It's the applicant's, right?
Yeah, applicant, why can't we have the applicant do it?
Applicants, the applicants, yeah.
Mr. Landers calling.
I don't know if Mr. Wall wants to talk before we close again.
We haven't closed, we're open. So, continuing hearing to October the 5th?
Okay, so we are no longer closed, we're continuing to October 5th, and we will receive notification from the applicant as to when that road layout is staked, so the board can go view that.
Can Mr. Wall also make the 5th, to say...
I, I can make it, but thank you for asking. And I just, if the hearing's going to be open, I, I just want to make sure that my clients have the equal opportunity to see the layout and respond, so if it could be done a week before...
Yeah, I have no problem with that, we agree that, you know, the only issue is that service, that... Yeah, I have no problem with that. We agree that, you know, the only issue is that service, that survey plan, but yeah, of course.
Right, and I just would, because you just.
Absolutely, no, you can be one-sided.
Right, okay, that's fine.
Don't use white flags.
Mr. Chair?
Pardon, pardon me. Exactly how much of it do you want laid out? Two hundred feet?
To the front of two thirty-one Trotting Park Road, and how, how far is the?
The site triangle.
Sightline on, on the right hand.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it, it doesn't have to extend very much on his property.
Our agent just said the site triangle itself.
Okay, that, that's what I was going to suggest, is they, they have a plan, so if they just mark that out.
Would it, would it be appropriate that we, they get something from the postmaster? I mean, we've heard pros and cons. It can't be moved, it can't be moved. I just don't know if the postmaster.
That would be appropriate where we're no longer closed, I think.
So that we're ask the applicant to request a written decision by the postmaster as to the mailboxes. I'm just throwing that out as a suggested.
Can I just reemphasize the need for this kind of delineation to be done by a licensed surveyor? And, all due respect to Mr. Landers Colley, he's not a licensed surveyor.
It will be done by a surveyor.
It has to be done by a surveyor, probably. Can I just ask Mr. Montero?
No.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there so the public can hear you. Now, did you speak with the postmaster as a, as a, regarding individual mailboxes?
I've, I've had some conversations, and also with the DPW, who would be the ones that would be getting involved.
But there, there's not going to be an issue with you having individual mailboxes?
The first one by John Santos said it can be moved. When you're talking about moving the mail.
No, I'm talking about on the, on the twelve units.
Oh, oh, yeah, they, they want individual ones, I'm sorry.
So that's going to change the way the mailman goes anyway. He's going to be going up the street.
He'll come in and go to the right.
They know that, and, and I'm sure something can be
Yes.
accomplished where maybe that whole bunch of boxes could be moved.
Okay, yes, yes, I understand.
I'm confused. Are you talking about the boxes that serving Percival Road?
No.
No, okay, then.
We have several other hearings on the agenda. We're getting bogged down in a little bit of maneuver, so there is a motion to continue to October the fifth. Is there a second?
Second, not.
Second, dad. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is continued to October the fifth.
Thank you.
Let's suggest that we take a ten-minute break. No, it's continued. It's straight continued. We'll take a ten-minute break with the sound of the next round.
And if we can't hear?
Yeah, I don't like this way.
Right away would require filing a permit with the engineering division. No site work is proposed and no further comments. And that's all I have for that, for comments, no letters. I think that's what we have.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Oh, got it.
Floor is yours.
I just want to build a shed on the, I have a driveway about three hundred and fifty feet long. I wanted to build a shed down there and start selling them, you know. And I can't put them further in my backyard because I can't drive over the septic system with a tow, tow truck to move them. That's how they move them. That's how they will be moved. And I have a little fish pond and I'm not going to fill in my fish pond. I've been asked by one of my neighbors to, he keeps telling me, I gotta put it in the backyard. I have no room in the backyard. Either I'd have to move two buildings, fill in a fish tank. So, the shed, I don't know if anybody sees these. They're, it's a fifteen by eight. They're, they're not trashy looking and, but it's three hundred feet off the road. And in order to get the tow truck to take these out, it's gotta be a straight shot. You can't take a tow truck, you know what I mean? Because they have to extend the bed, put rollers on it and pull them up. So, that's about all I got to say.
Board questions?
On average, how many of these sheds will you be building per day, per week, per month?
Well, I've never done this before, to be honest with you. I actually bought the shed in the beginning because I was having my basement done over. I was going to put all my tools in it. I ended up not using it. And I was thinking about getting rid of it. And the wife said, well, why don't you start building and sell them? So she had, she knows a lot of women. And they said, well, yeah, but we have, we would like to be able to go in and look at them, you know? So I don't know. I mean, it takes, once I sell one, it would probably take another two weeks to get another one in there, to start building it again. So that'd probably three, three a year, four a year.
Oh, three a year, that's all?
Yeah. I mean, it's not gonna be-
So that then brings me to exterior storage, which is part of the bylaw. Are you going to be storing anything out in that yard area?
Well, if there's anything at all, it'll be trash cans, so there's, it'd be a trash can. Because I have problems with raccoons and coyotes while it's not, you know.
Well, the reason being is you've got to, you've got to screen, I believe you've got to screen them, the storage area. Do you have any plans? Is there gonna be enough?
Screen them what?
The bylaw requires you to screen the storage area, if I'm correct.
There's no screen on it.
No, no screening, meaning in other words, from sight, from view.
Oh, 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 um, we'd have to look pretty hard to find it down my driveway.
Is that because, I think you said it was three hundred feet down the driveway where this would be located?
Yeah, yeah. Plus, there's, there's a lot of bushes on the one side, which Mike owns property on. He's got a fence there and thirty-foot trees. And I got thirty-foot trees in the back. So it's not like anybody can see it.
So basically, maybe three or four, maybe five a year? So there's not a lot of storage?
Yeah, but once one goes, the other one comes in. It's not gonna be like one here, one there. I don't have the space for all that.
Other questions?
No, to Tony's point, there should be no change in the outside appearance of the premises. So if you're building one and then I guess getting it out in fairly quick fashion, as you mentioned, the home is, was well off the road. When I drove by, I thought that, you have, you spoken to both the media abutters, or I'm not sure if they-
I had one, Mike comes over. He's sitting right, sitting right there. I didn't even know I needed a permit, to be honest with you. Vermont, you don't, you just throw one up, you know? So he was nice enough to tell me that I needed a permit. So I came down and get a permit and I explained to them I wanted to, you know, push that up there and, but I couldn't put it in the back. And then Mike said, well, you really gotta put it in the back, that's the only place you could put it. So here I am.
And again, since it's plastic, this is, it's a Lego set you're putting together, there's no, you're not running skill saws and things like that to put this thing together.
No, no. These are the tools I need.
Yeah, I saw that.
So it's, it's not like it's, you know, whatever.
I understand.
All righty.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
No problem with this. We're still going down, stay out.
Stay there.
You got number two here, outward appearance. You know, change in the outside appearance of the premises nor any other physical evidence of such an occupation.
How big are these sheds?
This is eight by fifteen. That's, that's the biggest I'd be making.
So that's eighty-eight times, that's a hundred and twenty feet. Now require a permit?
That's a hundred and twenty square feet.
Over a hundred, doesn't it?
No, you don't need a permit for a shed until you're over two hundred. But he's referring to you that he's constructing these and that they're then removed from the property to the owners. So they're not going to be staying on the lot.
Yeah, I understand. But they wouldn't be visible.
Well, what I could do, I suppose, is put up a temporary fence on the, on the far end of it. So that, and then like a gate-
Nobody could see what was going on and there would be no change in the outward appearance.
Yeah.
Maybe just go on by the letter of the law.
I think he's so far back.
Well, we can hear from the abutters too.
Yeah.
Wrong question?
Yes, sir. You've applied for a home occupation, special permit for a home occupation to assemble sheds. That's what the description is.
Mm-hmm.
But I think in your opening remarks, you said you're going to have a shed in your front yard permanently, that you're going to-
I already have two of them. I have two sheds in my, in my, in my front yard. Not, not in the front yard, in the backyard.
Okay. But are you gonna, you gave us this map here, it says, proposed location of shed building, shows it out by the street.
Yeah, you, that, that was wrong.
Huh?
It's wrong.
It's actually kinda right there. It's toward of the front corner of the house, but still visible.
But it, does it, my question is, is there going to be a shed in the front yard?
No. No, there isn't. It's gonna be way down the back. There was a gentleman that came to the house the other day and, from the ZBA, I guess, and who were you? Okay. You saw where it was.
Yeah, it's, it's in the side yard, technically. It's about five feet beyond the front corner of the house. I mean, it's, it's visible, but if you don't need a permit, I mean, for a hundred and twenty-foot shed.
Where are you going to be doing the assembly work?
Right where it is.
Well, where's that?
Right, three hundred feet down the driveway. It's at the edge of the house.
See there? The shed, he's got a platform right there. It's just beyond the front corner of the house, you can still see it. But if he did put up a section of fence, I mean, then it's not visible. You could just pull the fence out whenever the truck came to pull it away.
Now, you referred to a tow truck.
Mm-hmm.
Is that your tow truck or does somebody else own the tow truck?
No, there's a gentleman actually on Carrot Shop Road that has a tow truck. And I talked to the guy over there and, no problem. They tow anything.
A flatbed truck.
Flatbed, yeah.
Jerry, question?
No question.
Public comment?
My name's Mike Dominguez, 134 Carrot Shop Road. I'm that a butter that has the screening with the green chain link fences there. It's a few concerns. For one is the location of, you guys, you have visited the site and you've seen the deck that's on the, laying on the driveway. It's about three feet off my property line. As far as, like you just said, you do not require a permit for a shed that's over two hundred square feet, but you have to be ten feet off the property line. And the reason why I was turned, my concern is whereabouts is he's gonna be erecting these. And when I was saying backyard, it's not behind his backyard, is, he has a driveway that, which is stoned. And if he could just go to the left a little bit and back where the grass is, so he's actually off his driveway, to erect them, would be, you know, more favorable. And then, that's been there for six months. And I just like to know, how long does it take to erect these? And when they do come in, not to put all the stuff leaning up against the fence, which that one was, till they, you know, till the boxes got wet. And then they got all put on top of that deck and here's where we are. In eight, the sixth of the twenty-first, a few years ago, I've had a handicap disability facility that this board saw, that is right on the other side of that fence. And it has a exclusive playground and all type of handicap equipment on the other side of that. I was just wondering, where is the safety part of anything going through those hedges? We talk about nuts and screws, but it has a deck that has plywood and wood that has to be constructed before you can put that on top of it. And like I said, my safety, I've spent several hundred thousand dollars on that building that's on the other side of that fence. And there's walkways, there's everything there. Some of these kids have neurological problems, they're also in wheelchairs. And I don't know what this is gonna, what, what this is gonna impact on the other side of that. So that's one of my concerns. And the other one, like you said, the screening, is there any possible way, like you were saying, can you construct something to put it inside of something to build them so we can have that security-wise and not see it from the street? I mean, I can see a little bit through my haze, but, you know, basically, I said, that's my screening for my, my application. But my, my concern is the facility with the disability kids. And that's, that's basically all I have to say.
No. If we condition this for the construction area to be fenced and hidden from the road, he could then lean his stuff against his own fence.
Correct, yeah.
And I believe a shed is three feet off the property line, isn't it? Not ten?
Yeah, it's right, yeah. It's ten, if it's, if you have anything that's under a hundred square feet, you can put it three feet off the property line. When it gets to anything over a hundred square feet, then it requires a ten-foot. And then no permit up until two hundred square feet.
But the setback is also applicable for a structure that's intended to stay, whereas this gentleman's representing that he's putting these together and that they're then leaving the property and not staying.
Right. Yeah, but the base is, the base is staying there.
No, the base doesn't stay there.
Yeah.
Oh, the whole thing goes?
Yeah.
He said he has to build the base for each one.
Oh, well, I said the base is-
Right.
Got some age to it. Rained on a couple of times anyway.
Right, it's like I said, it's been there for six months, I mean-
The reason why it's been there-
If you need to come up with a microphone, you'd be right, it'd be nice to speak. Thank you.
So that's, that's basically, like I said, one of my concerns and, okay, then if that's, you know, the setbacks, okay, can we have a, some type of stipulation where it could be moved away from that fence due to the nature of what's on the other side of that fence?
Other public comment? Or someone else will be able to handle it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sandy McPhee. I have the Twin Ponds Farm right across the street from this gentleman. Since he moved in, I have a new job and that's picking up his trash. Whenever his, puts his trash out on Tuesdays, whenever he builds something, including insulation, all his plastic insulation, he just leaves it there and the prevailing winds brings it right over to my farm, which I keep meticulously. Also, if he's going to be using ramp trucks, that ramp truck's gonna have to back out and it's gonna back right into, I have a structure that's been on that road, ten feet off the road, and it's a permanent structure. It's built and that's where I sell all my strawberries and all my vegetables. It's gonna ram that thing. There's no way that it can, a ramp truck can back out of his driveway without hitting my vegetable stand. And it's a permanent eight by twelve with a cellar and an attic. And it's gonna get hit. Or the people that stop to buy the vegetables are gonna get hit. So that's gonna be a problem also with those plastic sheds.
I mean, he's gonna, the, the ramp truck is gonna back up to it, so the ramp truck won't be back, it will be driving out forward out of his property.
How is it gonna happen if he's gonna be going down, that ramp truck's gonna be going down the, his driveway?
Backing up to the shed?
He's not gonna be able to turn around in his front yard.
You won't have to, you just drive forward, out and turn left or right.
Okay. Also-
As I saw.
Yeah, I'm picturing it and since I live there and see what goes on, I'm pretty sure I'm right. Nevertheless, the drilling of these, there's a million screws that come with one of those sheds. I'm gonna be hearing that drilling day in and day out. And I spend all my time growing vegetables, picking vegetables and bringing them out to the street for people to, to take. I'm gonna be listening to that all day and into the evening. Also, I'd like it in writing, if you're going to permit him to do this, I'd like it in writing that he's going to build one and then when it's gone, then build another. Not have three, four, five or six going at the same time. Because I know that it's his son-in-law that's gonna be doing this business, not he. He can't even mow his own grass. Therefore, I humbly and respectfully ask that you take my comments into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
My name's Stephen Stewart. I live at 104 Parsons Lane. I came here to gather more information and understand what the proposal was. The document we received was very vague. So I, I just wanted to understand that the noise is a concern of mine too. I think our neighborhood, you know, is, is, is a, is a very residential-type neighborhood into hear screw guns or nail guns or saws going off continuously through the day would be very disruptive. So I don't know if there's a restriction on business hours or what, what time these things can be assembled. I think that'd be something that should be considered.
Other public comment?
Hi. Oh, my name's Marks Harris. I live at 141 Carrot Shop Road. I don't know the neighbor. I haven't met him yet. I moved there a year ago. I own a business in town and I'm out working most of the time. I got the ZBA letter and that's why I'm here tonight. I also, comment was made about being vague about what the permit was about, about an assembly permit to assemble sheds. And I thought to myself, well, that's great, someone's trying to start a business assembling. And I saw, I got online and I saw the plastic sheds. And I said, that's a good idea. And then I thought about the shed places that I see, there's one in Mashpee, that you go look at sheds, you go purchase one and they deliver it. Those are already assembled. I would, I don't, I can't tell anyone how to run their business. If it were me and I sold sheds to be assembled, I'd probably assemble them on the person's property. But I understand sometimes that may not be feasible for them. I just thought that I wanna be cautious about having ten sheds show up, being lined up out in front of my house. I've got no problem with someone doing what they wanna do with their own property, but I don't think it should be visible. And so I think there probably needs to be some restrictions if it's approved, about quantity. If one's gonna be built and moved off the property, I can see that's fine. But if all of a sudden, business picks up and then there's a lot of assembly going on, there's more noise, and then who knows? Maybe there are, maybe there will be employees required. So I think there has to be some consideration with the permit on possibly restrictions or at least guidelines. That's what I have to add. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's one more, I think.
Sir? And then you may.
Hi, I'm Tom Fuller. I am another abutter of the property. And I too came to get an, it's an information session for me. I didn't really, I heard smatterings about what was going on, but I didn't really know anything concrete about what his intention was. And I echoed the other gentleman's sentiments about why not build them at the person's place, sell them and then build them there. That was the first thing I thought of too. Again, and again echoing his sentiments, I don't want a guy, you know, not be entrepreneurial and do things to, you know, make money and to, you know, do what you have to do to survive. But, I mean, I, I just wanna know about the noise factor, about how close you wanna start building them. When I look at that property, I can see through my screen that his backyard is relatively small compared to the front end. So I don't know if he intended to build them on the front end or just, you know, if he had a game plan as to what was going on. But I've heard a lot tonight and I hope that we come to a conclusion as far as, you know, if we fence him in to do this stuff, you know, how is he gonna pick the sheds up and put them on the ramps? Is it three a year or is it thirteen a year? Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, give her hand up in the back. Please go up there.
My name's Diane Hadleton. I'm 144 Carrot Shop Road. And the facility that my son was talking about, I'm the great-grandmother and I would be out in this backyard with this cerebral palsy child. So I am concerned about the noise, being out, you know, startling noise. I am also, I didn't know if he was gonna have an employee. Is he planning to do this construction himself or is he planning anybody else to do it with him? And I thought that it did seem like it was sort of the front of the house where he was planning to construct this, so I am concerned. And I'm here just to voice my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment? How would the board like to proceed?
Board discussion?
Sure.
Well, I think that every one of the concerns can be addressed in 249.5A. Two, outward appearance, there should be no change to the outside appearance of the premises. Four says negative impacts. No equipment or process shall be used in home occupation which creates noise. So you're gonna have to be concerned about that situation as well. Employees, only family members can be employees according to this bylaw. You can have one non-family member, but that's up to the board to decide. But you can't make noise, you can't change the outward appearance of the property by doing this. So I think that everyone's concerns can be addressed by the bylaw itself.
Yeah, for the applicant, obviously, in hearing the abutters, we're gonna need some screening, we're gonna need to limit certain hours. This is, since it is a plastic shed, I believe you can, you're bolting it together, you're not running skill saws and things like that. So hopefully we can learn about very quiet component, 'cause the noise can't transmit and bother the abutters. We don't want it to have, as one of the abutters also mentioned, that you're gonna have inventory all over your property because that, again, it's not supposed to be, change the outward appearance of the home. This, you're not like an accountant inside doing work, so we wanna make sure that we're protecting the abutters per the bylaw. So hopefully again, we can maybe get to that point, but we gotta address it, obviously.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I think this can be conditioned. I mean, we can do hours of operation screening. I think it's, it can be conditioned.
Yeah, obviously, and he volunteered that he could put a fence up in the front. And as far as the abutters' concerns of more than one shed, if they're a hundred and twenty feet, you got two of them there, you trigger, excuse me, let me finish.
Sir, you need to be recognized. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
If you, they can only be one, because if you have two, you're over the two hundred feet and you require, you're required to have a permit and you're also required the ten feet. And I'm not so sure that, is it possible for us to do some kind of probationary period? Where you abide by the, doesn't trigger any complaints from the neighbors?
Would be your option.
Yeah.
Well, we can then. I think that's, would make the neighbors feel more comfortable and you would definitely be limited to one. No two on the shed.
Sorry, we also have zoning enforcement, so if your condition is one shed at a time and he all of a sudden has ten, the neighbors are able to call and zoning enforcement officer would go check. So you're covered.
I don't know if it's, well, let's structure this first and-
I like the probation period suggestion.
And then, I, maybe the abutters would like to weigh in after we craft something? Is that proper?
Close, but I agree with you. I mean, a one-year period.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, they're gonna know that they can call any time and complain, so I guess.
I don't, I don't view this as a home occupation. To me, a home occupation is where you have work done inside, perhaps by an accountant or a seamstress or a tailor or somebody like that, working in their house. That is a home occupation. This is more akin to a home-based service business, where you have a plumber or a contractor who runs a business out of the house. But again, the work done is done elsewhere. And in our zoning bylaw, when you have a home-based service business, it specifically provides no work other than the moving of goods, materials or equipment shall occur outside of a structure on the property. I don't think this qualifies for any relief under the zoning bylaw. I think we have no choice but to not deny him. He doesn't qualify. This is a contractor's yard that, again, he's committed and he's applied for a home occupation and he's not a home occupation. He basically is trying to put a contractor's yard under the guise of a home occupation. We can't allow him to do that.
Jerry?
Nothing further to add.
I only apply for what I was told to.
The, the other thing I point out, I don't believe it's appropriate for a probationary period. This board should not get involved at all in enforcement. That's what the building commissioner does. We render a decision, we put conditions on. If they're violated, the building commissioner gives them a cease and desist order. It doesn't come back to us. It doesn't come back to us.
How would the board like to proceed?
Good question. Given what Frank has just said, could he reapply as a home-based service rather than making a decision now or make a decision now?
I think he could, but I don't think he'd...
He'd get nowhere.
I would agree with Frank's assessment, that that would just allow him to store vehicles and go elsewhere to do things.
Oh, I, I'm, okay. I'm foggy tonight, sorry.
Yeah, this, there's been tests, are concerned by the neighbors of noise. We don't really know how much is going to be generated, but it's not, noise is something that we should prevent. But also, it's the work outside. This is a residential neighborhood, basically. Any home occupation has to be done inside a structure on the property. This is right out in the yard. It's not allowed.
I agree with your assessment.
One neighbor has diesel trucks, starts at six in the morning, okay? And another neighbor behind me cuts firewood all the time with a splitter and a chainsaw. The other neighbor next door to me is building sheds for the Wampanoags, Indians. And here I am being denied for a screw gun. That sounds fair.
The other people never came before this board asking for a permit.
So if you come in and ask for a permit, then you, then you get denied. So you can do it illegally.
Denied because in my opinion, the zoning bylaw does not allow you to do what you want to do, sir.
How would the board like to proceed?
I think we should offer him a withdrawal without prejudice and maybe take it up with the town further, and maybe he can...
So, we just use a cordless screw gun to assemble these?
Yeah, that's it. I mean, how much noise is that going to make? It'll get you right out of bed with that one.
So, sir, at this point, I think there's at least two members of the board who are going to vote no. You need four in favor. Four, you have to have a four or unanimous decision to get it. What Ms. Murphy's suggesting, if you'd like to withdraw your application, you can certainly try to rework the project or come up with a different way of doing things. Because denial of special permit, you won't be allowed to come back to the board for two years.
Two years, yeah.
All right, what about if I keep it there and don't build any more on there?
Keep what's there?
Keep, yeah, keep the shed there and don't build any more on there. I could use it as a, as a sample.
A demo.
Let people come and see it.
You don't need a permit for it, so.
Huh?
You don't need a permit for it.
It's not in his application, so...
That's not before the, the board is to consider. So you'd have to take it up with the building commissioner if you're in compliance with what's there. What would you like to do, sir? Would you like to withdraw your application or are you going to ask for a vote to, ask for a vote, see?
I'd rather just get the vote, to be honest with you. It's not going to make a difference one way or the other, and you tell me I don't need a permit. So I just won't build them there.
He doesn't understand.
He doesn't understand. You don't understand. Under 200 feet.
Can I give a question for both of us?
Please, please do, Kevin. Thank you. Wow. I mean, three sheds a year.
Withdraw without prejudice.
Request a withdrawal without prejudice. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, your application is withdrawn without prejudice, sir. Hope you can find a way to rework the situation.
Can I ask you a question? So I don't need a permit to build a shed as long as it's 10 feet off his property line, right?
Yes.
That's what you're telling me, right?
That's, yes, that is my understanding of the law.
Three feet if it's under 200. 110 feet.
Three feet.
So you can construct the shed that you have.
Okay, where it is.
If it's on the front of the house, right?
But you better check with the building commissioner.
Thank you.
Next up on our new hearings, we have 06023 Goodrich, 61 Walker Street, Falmouth, requesting a modification of special permit number 98-90 to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming detached accessory structure, increasing lot coverage by structures.
All right, we have Scott and Susan Goodrich, 165 Eagle Rock Road in Stoughton, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a modification of a special permit number 98-90 pursuant to sections 240-102A and 24011.3A4 in parentheses of the code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming detached accessory structure, increasing lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 61 Walker Street, Falmouth, Mass. And from the town departments, the assessors are requesting an inspection prior to the CO. Planning has no comment. Health says that the property is on town sewer. They have no issues with the project, four-bedroom maximum. And we have engineering. We have number one, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away in public utilities. Walker Street and Glenwood Ave are public rights away in this area. The proposed driveway on Glenwood Ave will require a driveway permit. We request that the board either require the applicant to obtain the approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to closing the hearing for the special permit or that the board include the following condition if the special permit is approved. Quote, "The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit," unquote. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights away. Four, the project includes infiltration for a new roof as we typically recommend. Five, where the project falls under the jurisdiction of the conservation commission, we defer to the conservation commission for stormwater management and construction, erosion controls. And six, we are reviewing this project to determine if an address should be assigned to the secondary structure, and if so, what that address should be. We'll have an answer and assign the address if necessary during the building permit application. And I think that's all I have for now. I have no letters? Wait, no, no letters.
One variance and one special permit to file.
Right, yes.
For the app.
Thank you very much. For the record, Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney here in Falmouth, and I'm before you tonight representing Scott and Susan Goodrich, the owners of 61 Walker Street. They're seeking permission to modify special permit decision number 98-90 and to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming accessory structure, which is a second dwelling on the property. This property, 61 Walker Street, is the northern part of Walker. If we stepped outside, you could probably hit it with a tennis ball. The lot is 8,759 square feet. It's a residential B zoning district, and the majority of the lot is within the AE flood zone, which includes both the existing and proposed accessory structures. The special permit 98-90 allowed a variance from setback for the primary dwelling as well as the height of the accessory structure. At that point, the height limitation was 18 feet for accessory structures, and the accessory structure is 22. That came to be because what is now the accessory structure was a small house, and the then owners obtained approval to build the primary dwelling fronting on Walker Street. The condition of that special permit was that there should be no kitchen in the accessory dwelling. However, I don't know how or when it happened, but there is a kitchen in there today. Currently, it's a three-bedroom, single-family primary dwelling, a detached accessory structure with two bedrooms. There is a kitchen, as I mentioned, so it does constitute a second dwelling. Total footprint is 2,061 square feet, 23.53% lot coverage by structure. There are non-conformities abound on this site. The front yard setback to the primary dwelling is 20.8 feet, where 25 is required, which is allowed by that variance. The accessory structure has a side yard setback of 4.3 feet, where 10 is required. Lot coverage by structure is currently 23.53%, where 20 is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. Currently, there are five bedrooms. This property is on a sewer, which allows for four by right. It's non-compliant with the flood zone standards, and not least of which, it is non-conforming because of the existing kitchen in the accessory dwelling. The applicant purchased this property in 2021. The accessory structure is in poor condition. They'd like to rebuild in order to utilize the first floor as storage space, and they'll be bringing it into compliance with flood zone requirements. So the first floor would not be, would not be finished. It would be not habitable on the first floor. The proposed structure is a barn-like appearance, unfinished storage on the first floor with additional habitable space on the second floor, being an office and a den. The kitchen is to be eliminated. There will no longer be a second dwelling in compliance with the special permit decision. The space is intended as accessory to the primary dwelling, not as a separate dwelling, not as an ADU, just as additional habitable space. And there will be a reduction of the bedroom count from five to four. There was a slight expansion in size. The lot coverage by structure will be 24.18%. Lot coverage by structures, paving and parking will be 37.57, which remains conforming as well. It improves or eliminates the existing non-conformities. It improves the side yard setback, 4.3 feet to eight. The lot coverage by structure, though slightly increasing, is eliminated as a non-conformity with the issuance of a special permit. It eliminates the second dwelling. There'll be no cooking facilities in the proposed structure, and it will comply with flood zone requirements. The ridge height will remain the same, it'll be 22 feet. This does, however, require modification of that existing special permit under sections 240-10.2A and 240-11.3A4. 1040-10.2A states that pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider the standard 240-12.1E and whether or not the alteration creates any new non-conformities, imperious views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new non-conformities created. The existing non-conforming setback is approved. Lot coverage by structure is eliminated as a non-conformity and eliminates the existing second dwelling. There's no impacts to views and vistas, as this will replace the existing structure in substantially the same location and size. The dwelling and the accessory structure will remain in line with nearby homes in the neighborhood. In addition, in the RC zoning district, lot coverage by structure exceeding 20% does require a special permit. And for that, the board's asked to consider the size and height of structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effect of shadows, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embankments. In preparing the lot comparison worksheet, it's clear that the house and the accessory structure, both existing and as proposed, remain among the larger in the area. However, the proposed structure is substantially the same size as what exists. It's being moved to a better location, improving existing non-conformities, and it's an increase of only 57 square feet in footprint. It's designed to be in character with the neighborhood visually and aesthetically. There's no impact on shadowing of views and vistas in the public ways. It's an improvement over the existing conditions with no increase in roof height, and the existing setbacks being improved. And there is an improvement on nitrogen to the coastal embankments in that the bedroom count's being reduced from five to four. This project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions, both for the applicant and the town. The existing non-conformities are either improved or eliminated. There's no new dimensional non-conformities. There's no adverse effects, and certainly none that would overbalance the benefits that I've outlined. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe that it meets all the requirements of 1040-10.2A, 240-11.3A4, and 240-12.1E. For these reasons, I believe the board can and should grant the special permit. I would, of course, be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Questions? Jerry?
Looks like a good permit, good project.
Mark?
No, I think Mr. Clower's presentation has answered my questions. Thank you.
Mark?
No, other than a couple of raccoons are going to be unhappy. I don't think it's good.
Trash pandas.
It certainly needs a little improvement.
At least you don't live too close. You're okay.
I think they're the last ones to use the kitchen, too.
Counsel, you testified that it's going to be, I've seen the plans, storage on the first floor, office on the second, a den on the second floor.
Yep.
Why do you need a bathroom on the first floor and a bathroom, a shower on the second floor?
Why not?
On an 8,000-square-foot lot?
Yeah, I mean, there's no, bathrooms don't affect septic flows. They don't, you know, in the design, it's something that they wanted to have, easy access if they're outside doing work in the yard, but if someone's upstairs, it gives them a chance to have easier access. This is designed as overflow. The applicants have four adult children. They're expecting their first grandchild, perhaps as soon as tomorrow. And, you know, the idea is that this is additional habitable space. There's no reason, there's no rational grounds for limiting the number of bedrooms, bathrooms in this. It's otherwise unfinished on the first floor.
Concerns traditionally the board, though, looking at, I mean, looking at the variance, it was supposed to be essentially a swap from the now accessory structure was going to be essentially going to be a, after we read the decision, the variance was going to be like a loft.
Effectively, what we're doing is what was supposed to have been done in 1990.
I understand, but the point is, is that, you know, when these projects, I mean, there's non-compliance that then, over time, become grandfathered and then can become problematic. My just concern is down the road, this is becoming a Airbnb.
So, understood, but this is, you know, we have flood zone standards here, so it's unfinished first-floor space.
Yep.
It can be conditioned as such in the decision. It can be conditioned in the decision and should be conditioned. This is not to be erected separately because it's not an accessory dwelling unit. It's part of an overall, single-family residence. There's no, nothing saying you can't have bedrooms in an accessory building. And I think that the decision serves as a restriction, the way that we used to use deed restrictions. The board has found that the restrictions set forth in the decision are sufficient to do that. I think that, you know, limiting the bathroom there is, doesn't serve any actual purpose other than taking away some convenience from the applicants.
It's the shower that's kind of hanging me up on this.
Sure. But I mean, we're, we're saying, you know, we're telling you that there's no, there's no cooking facilities being put in here that can be conditioned as such.
Sort of the previous applicant saying there would be no condition.
But, you know, when we talk about non-compliance, these applicants are not the ones who are non-compliant.
Fair, that's fair.
And I don't believe that theoretical misgressions, digressions should be used as a basis for a decision or restriction in that decision.
Just giving pause is all. I'll see if anyone else shares my concern.
The minute I saw the plan, I thought Airbnb. That's exactly what I said. Other than that, the kitchen's going. Good. I'm not worried about them having a shower. They're going to have an extra kid around, so they're going to need another shower. No, I think it's a good project.
Nice place to go after you mow the lawn.
Yeah, you go to hide.
Four bedrooms max, right? That's what we, and to your point, I think we can condition it for the approval to make sure that your concerns don't come to fruition, hopefully.
Tony?
I agree with Jim's concerns, but this is definitely going to be an improvement to the area. No other questions?
Public comment? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close?
Motion to close. Mr. Turner and Suzanne, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed. No more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve the conditions?
Motion approved by conditions by Scott.
Second.
Second by Suzanne.
Yep.
Findings?
All right, let's see. It's in an RC zone. Flood zone is AE12. The variance was 90, 1990, right?
Decision number 98-90.
Right. And then there was a special permit 06008, right? I had that one, too. Okay, I have two. Lot size is 8,759. Existing coverage is 23.53 with total 35.21. Proposed is 2418. All coverage is 3767?
Yeah.
For once. The height is 22, right?
Yes.
Look at me on a roll here. It's sewed. I think that's about all I have, right?
Lot comparison submitted.
Oh, yeah, we do have a lot comparison. We have no letters.
Four bedrooms.
Non-conformities are being reduced.
Mr. Chair, can I actually ask you to open for one second? There's a point I wanted to make.
Sure. It's a motion of, or a second, second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed.
At the risk of snatching victory from the John, defeat from the John's victory. The engineering referral made comment about a driveway off Glenwood. I think what they're looking at here is the removal of the tennis court, of the basketball court. They're not proposing to put a driveway there. That's going to be lawn. So when we condition, you know, all referral comments, I just want to note that there is no driveway off Glenwood.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to close. One second.
Okay.
You're up to Mr. Dumpy this time. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You're closed again. Continuing on with our findings and conditions. Findings?
I think I'm.
240, 10.2A.
Not more detrimental. Will be improvement from the existing structure. The raccoons might not be happy.
Four bedrooms.
They're always mad.
It's on sewer. Conditions?
Con-con.
Con-con.
No kitchen.
Kitchen to be removed.
No rental.
Lots to be used as, yep. There'd be dwelling purposes.
The assessors need an inspection before the CO.
Yep.
To be kept to four bedrooms. And we're eliminating the driveway permit, right?
So there's no parking? There's no vehicles coming off Glenwood, period?
That's my understanding, yeah. And if they ever wanted to do that, they'd have to apply for a driveway permit?
We should put it like that, then. No parking off of Glenwood unless, use that as a condition, I think. And we did four bedrooms, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I had. I don't know if anybody else has any.
You have some, right?
I started framing.
Yes.
They are at the max. Certified by the foundation, so that we're meeting setbacks. No further structures. And okay?
Other findings, no opposition at the hearing. Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Next up.
Good luck.
Good luck, folks.
Good luck.
For the raccoons.
Next up, we have 06123 McGlaughlin, 110 Grant Nav, Falmouth. Appeal of the building commissioner's determination. If you don't mind this, the collection.
Should I read this? I have Connor McGlaughlin, 110 Grant Nav, Falmouth, Mass. filed an appeal with the Falmouth Town Clerk pursuant to MGL 4A and 8 and 15 and 240, 12.4A. Code of Falmouth appealing the building commissioner's determination. The subject property is 110 Grant Nav.
Mr. Chair, before you go too far, I just wanna note that there was a request for a continuance submitted today.
Well, and we'll be happy to act on that, but if it's all right for you before we take that up. Regarding this particular appeal, I did have a conversation with the board, with town council and the zoning administrator. The current enforcement request essentially was permissible pursuant to COVID-19 emergency regulations, and it is the suggestion of town council that this matter be held in abeyance until those restrictions sunset next April. That being said, as long as the applicant and council is clear that this is not a waiver of the town's rights to request enforcement, it is not an ascent to intensify outdoor use. It is my no, this board has no power over liquor licensing or a request to report to modify or continue that. Merely, it asks any zoning issues to merely take no action at this time and to encourage this applicant, as well as anybody else who is currently using outside C or so, to get applications in before the ZBA so that next April of 2024, they will either have permission or not. How does the board feel about that particular action?
I think it's a wise course of action, given the fact that the COVID regulations continue in existence for the time being.
Jerry?
Yes.
Mark?
I am, well, good with that.
No problem.
I agree with your opinion.
I agree.
Would you like to withdraw now, or?
Well, so.
Or for continuance?
I guess my question is, how should we approach this? Should we, because I need to preserve the appeal rights.
My proposal, the motion that I would make is that the board hold any enforcement, any action on this appeal in abeyance until April of 2024, pending.
Can I, can I request a continuance until April 2024 and sign a waiver?
No.
Nice try, though.
Because I wanna, my concern is you have 30 days to appeal a building commissioner's decision, so if I withdraw, I effectively relinquish those days to appeal.
Not if it's in abeyance.
I don't know.
Isn't this a stay?
Right, so here's the proposal, is that the town, through the zoning board, is willing to put a stay on the enforcement order until April 1st of 2024. So everything will be essentially frozen until that time. And based on the input that we perceive, anticipation is that, in the meanwhile, assuming that April 1st, 2024, is the cutoff date with the state COVID protocol, that as of that date, your client would come into compliance or seek permits, et cetera, and that enforcement could and would take place as of the cessation of the COVID protocol. So this will literally just freeze everything. You will not lose.
So the question is, the question is, do we continue this through the abeyance or do we withdraw? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I guess what I would recommend to you is that you accept the board staying everything until that date with the expectation that your client will have resolved these matters or that you reapply with us to correct.
Okay, very good. So I suppose I will withdraw the request. Request withdrawal.
Wouldn't you prefer to just have the decision be that the board will stay?
That's fine, then, 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 let's not withdraw.
Stay enforcement, I guess.
I understand that you'll have everything fixed. And that keeps everybody happy.
Okay. So that's the board's decision, effectively, the board will issue a decision.
So I'm gonna make a motion to stay enforcement by the building inspector till April of 2024, pending.
April 1st.
April 1st.
Other than if the state elects to extend, in which case, the stay would also extend.
So I'll reword it, to stay enforcement pending the sunset of COVID-19 regulations.
But doesn't he have to apply for the extension?
Prior to, yes.
Right.
But maybe just, so the stay, we're basically telling the building inspector to put this on ice till next April. So that's acknowledging that we have received an application or an appeal within a 30-day period that protects.
I'm good with that.
So everyone's protected.
Yep, fine. No, I think it's a really good outcome.
You made the motion, I seconded it. All those in favor.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed.
I turned to Brian Wallace, please stop talking. Guys, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Finally, final hearing, all the new hearings this evening, is 06223. The Skian One Grove Street, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct an addition to the existing nonconforming single-family. What's he do? Vote to extend the business of the board until when?
Will we complete this at current hearing?
Complete the agenda. The agenda.
30 minutes? Motion to extend by. Mr. Fineran wants 20 minutes, I'll second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Board's business continued. Read this and then get to you, sir.
I'm up?
You're up.
All right, sorry you had to wait so long tonight. We all apologize. This is an application for Wesley and Carol Gee and Dennis Skian?
Sheen.
She, it's S-H? Oh, mine says S-K.
Yeah, mine is too.
Okay, but I knew some Sheens. I didn't know any Skians, but we'll go with it. At 545 East Third Street, Unit 6, in Southie. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for special permit pursuant to sections 240, 10.2A, the Code of Falmouth, to construct, in addition to the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as One Grove Street in North Falmouth. And from town departments, let's see what we have. Planning has no comment. Fire department has no issues with this project. Health says the property is on town sewer and is allowed three bedrooms by right in the new silver sewered area. Water department has no comment. We're on a roll here. We've done conservation. Approval, I'm getting that. Approval with conditions. And let's get to our engineer. And here's the engineer. Okay, the engineer. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Grove Street is a public right-of-way. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way will require filing a permit with the engineering division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights away. Drywells are proposed for a new roof, as we typically recommend. Where this project falls in the jurisdictions of the Conservation Commission, we defer to the con for stormwater management and construction, erosion controls. We recommend the following condition be included or anything similar. Quotations, "Construction activity shall not cause erosion or sedimentation onto the abutting properties or town right-of-way." I see no letters, right? That's it?
Good evening.
Hi, Jordan Reyes from Crafted Construction for Gee and Skian families. So, yeah, a pre-existing nonconforming structure. And I don't know if you guys have any questions about it. Seems pretty simple, you guys know what you're looking at.
Questions for the board, Tony?
I was out there, it certainly would be, fit well within the community, so I have no other questions.
Scott?
Ridge height, 26 point, is that 26 feet 2 inches? The ridge?
That's what I have.
Okay.
No, I agree with Tony. Cute little place, time for a little bit of an upgrade. No other questions.
Stan?
Looks like a good project to me.
I agree. So modest addition, 20 by 12 bedroom, and it's well under 20% lot coverage. Mark?
No, I think it's perfect.
Right?
Well, I went out and took a look, and this is a very interesting property, but you probably don't know the answer, but how does the last house on the street get to be number one?
I don't know. It's a cool property on that street, though.
They jump over, like Highland Avenue.
I live on Pine Bank Road in North Falmouth, and we were the second house on the left, and we were number one Pine Bank.
So it does get better. This house actually was previously numbered as Three Grove. There were actually two lots that were combined. So somehow, and that was as of 96. So somehow, they became number one instead of three, but.
Bill and Rose would have gone.
See all you learn when you came out tonight?
Jerry, any questions? Okay, public comment? Seeing none. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
A motion to close by Suzanne is her second. I'll give that to Mark. All in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye. Aye opposed. Hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve with conditions. Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, it's in an RC zone. The overlay is Wild Harbor. Flood zone AE15 and AE16. They did have a previous zoning board of appeal, 49 in 96. Lot size is 9972. It's a public road. I have the addition as 20 by 12 with the height. We all just decided it's 26.2. Sewred, three bedrooms only. I think that's all I have.
Existing lot coverage is 11.8%, going to 14.2. Con-con has issued an order of conditions. No opposition at the hearing or in the file.
No.